I'm joined tonight by Mr. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, your things are wrong, Mrs. Gerber, Superintendent Cummings, Mrs. Maxicanelli, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Kelly, and Mr. Asa sends his regrets, he unfortunately will not be able to join us tonight. I'm going to ask you all to please rise for the pledge. Happy Flag Day, everybody. So, at the end of May, the Board recognized the achievements of some of our musicians and our athletes from fall and winter sports, and unfortunately, the spring season was still going on. So, we wanted to take the opportunity to recognize some of the athletic achievements of our students. And it's not on the agenda, so I'm going to ask the Board for a motion to add athletic champion recognition to our agenda. Can I have a motion? Ms. Rotelli, seconded by Ms. Jacobson, all in favor of adding this to the agenda. Motion carries eight zero. So, I want to, first of all, thank Ms. Brown and our head principals who heeded the call, the frantic call of reaching out to our student athletes to join us tonight. So much exciting things have happened on the field, and on the track, and on the courts over the last few weeks, and we just didn't want to end the school year without publicly recognizing the accomplishment of these student athletes. So, I'm not sure if everyone is here, so I'm happy those that you can join, so I'm just going to read down the list, and if you are here, I would ask you to please rise and come up, so we can take a picture and recognize your accomplishments. We're going to start with the Fairfield Ludlow Champions, Ludlow Softball, they were the FCAC Champions. Mr. Hattis, you know, and I want to give our head principals, if they would like to see anything about their teams, the opportunity.
Sorry, Greg Hattis, Head Principal Ludlow. Congratulations to the girls softball team. There's actually a charity benefit tonight, and a lot, some of the players are in that, and the coach is there, so they weren't able to join us, but we have Ellie and Katie with us, and we are so proud of this team. They only had one loss in the regular season, and then through a crazy quirk of the CIAC, three teams were tied for first place, and they drew straws, and the team that ended up in first, actually Ludlow had beaten in the regular season, and then beat them in the FCAC Championship as well. So, you know, the whole state seeding thing was a whole nother thing, but they crushed so many of their competitors, they were an amazing team to watch, great fundamentals, and just super positive energy, and we're so proud of them for being FCAC Champions, first time in Ludlow history, and just yet one blink away from a second-time state championship, but we're looking forward to a great season next year, so great job to the softball team.
All right. Mr. Cummings, Dr. Hattis and Mr. Cummings, why don't you stand over there with the ladies and get a picture? We want to memorialize this, and congratulations, and please extend the Board's congratulations to your teammates, and thank you so much for taking time out. Ms. Jacobson, why don't you get in there as a Ludlow parent to represent the Board? Get in there! We need Board representation. There have also been accomplishments, well, many accomplishments for all of our teams, but tonight, we're also recognizing the Ludlow Boys Track and Field, Steven Didelberg, and Ethan Cardy, Nate Kramer, Chris Malor, and Tyler Bartlett. I don't know if any of those gentlemen are here tonight. So, Steven was the FCAC Class LL and Open Champion for the Pole Vault, Ethan Cardy, Nate Kramer, and Chris Malor, Tyler Bartlett, were FCAC Champions for the 4X800. Four-by-eight-hundred. Can you tell that I don't have athletes? Congratulations to these athletes, and I wish that you could be here, but I appreciate the short notice, so we, on behalf of the Board, we congratulate you for your accomplishments, and we're looking forward to watching you next season. Moving on to Ludlow Girls Track and Field, Tia Stapleton, Triple Jump Champion, FCAC in Class Double L, Tia Stapleton, High Jump Champion, Class Double L. Is Tia with us? And Ludlow Girls Tennis, Gabby and Ellie Price, won this, they are, I saw them, they They won the CAC Invitational Doubles Title. Mr. Dr. Hattis, still getting used to that?
Sure, that's okay. So, Gabby's a senior, Ellie's a junior, and they had an amazing season, went undefeated for the doubles, girls tennis, and they won the state doubles championship, the first and again in Ludlow history, so they did an amazing job, and I was talking to them in the hallway earlier, they only lost two sets all year long, so I think the final was like 6-3, 6-2 in the finals, right? So, a sweep there, too, so amazing work from these two talented sisters and Falcons.
All right. Dr. Hattis, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Guernsey, why don't you represent the Board on this picture? Moving on to our Ward Champions. In case you hadn't heard, there's this baseball team at Fairfield Ward, and they just happened to win the state championship this weekend. They are the FCAC and are state champions, and I'm so incredibly grateful for Mr. Covanna to reaching out to the team, and why don't you come and introduce who is with us tonight?
Good evening, everyone. Paul Covanna, Principal of Fairfield Ward High School. I am very honored to introduce Brett Connor and John Galucci, two of the coaches at Fairfield Ward High School, their baseball team, for this historic event. We have a little round of applause. What's absolutely outstanding is the last time that Andrew Ward High School won a state championship in 1981, and then Fairfield High School won a baseball state championship in 2002, and now Fairfield Ward High School won our first-ever Double L State Championship with an overall ranking of number one in the state of Connecticut, and we're so proud of these gentlemen for leading our young men. Having the opportunity to attend a lot of the games, it was just an absolute whirlwind. It was great to see our student body who came out in full force to really just celebrate our team and the school, and Mr. Connors and Mr. Galucci went out of their way to incorporate the student body into this win. And so much at the end of the FCAC Championship, both coaches came up and thanked almost every student-represent fan that was there, and that meant a great deal to our student body as well as the school. So, a sincere thank you and congratulations to our outstanding baseball program.
Okay, moving on, also at Ward, Girls Track and Field, Meg Barnow, FCAC Champ in 100 Hurdles, and Jessica Amaral, FCAC Champ in Pole Vault.
We're so happy tonight to be joined by Meg and her mom. Meg is an outstanding student athlete. She was, as you noted, an FCAC Champ in the 100 Hurdles. She also has the school record for the high jump, and is currently competing in the heptathlon, where she is second overall in the state of Connecticut as we speak right now. Meg is an outstanding member of our junior class, who is a wonderful representative of Fairfield Ward High School, and we're so honored that she's here and proud of her outstanding accomplishments.
Meg, thank you for taking the time to join us tonight, and we're going to look forward to watching you next spring as well, so I'm happy to hear that you're a junior, so we have something to look forward to, and we will welcome you back next year, hopefully. Moving on to Ward Tennis, Petro Kuzmanov won the second state title back-to-back for the men's singles.
When we think of true champions, I think of Petro. He not only won back-to-back single state championships, he's also back-to-backs All-State, and he is an outstanding athlete and outstanding student athlete. He's very humble, but he is a wonderful young man who continues to bring pride to Ward Tennis and the Fairfield Ward High School community. Congratulations, Petro.
Mr. Peterson? Yep? Thank you again for joining us, and for, I know, a short notice, but we just, the Board wanted to have an opportunity to publicly recognize your accomplishments and congratulate you. You're welcome to stay, but I appreciate that there's other things going on, I don't know if anybody has finals, so with that, I will bid you adieu if you so choose. Moving on to public comment. At this time, we invite members of the public to come forward, give comment on agenda items, three minutes per speaker. Please give your name for the record.
I'm sorry, I had to remember to press. I've heard enough people tell you to do that. You're going to hear the Superintendent talk about a new regulation on grading, and I just want you to know that the FEA has a significant problem with the reassessment component of the grading policy. We believe it represents a significant change in our working conditions and a real burden to the teachers. Essentially, what it's about is allowing students to retake any sort of assessments that they want to over the course of the year. There's going to be a number of assessments per quarter, not midterms and finals, but the quarterly assessments. A lot of these assessments have been created over the course of years in PLTs and during summer work. They're designed to meet NGSS standards, they include authentic material, there's speaking involved, discourse, written material, listening material, so in many cases, these assessments are extremely difficult to replicate with an additional version. I'd also say that, you know, the amount of, the proctoring of these tests will also take a significant amount of time. Many students are not available during the contractual hours to retake tests, we end up chasing them down quite a bit, so that means that they'll either, if they can, come in during non-contractual hours, or maybe not at all, maybe some students won't be able to do it at all because they have sports or other things involved, and we're also concerned about the grading burden that it'll create, depending on how many students avail themselves of it. So, as I said, we have a big concern about the, about this component of the grading regulations, the other components are fine, and the other thing I might note is that we have a lot going on next year. You know, you've got a new teacher evaluation system going in, you've got a new middle school schedule going in, you've got a new district improvement plan going in, you've got a new IEP management system going in, you've got new math resources being rolled out, and there's only so much bandwidth that teachers have to be able to handle all this new, these new initiatives going on. So, it's my sincere hope that you rethink the reassessment component of the grading regulations, and either postpone it for a future year, or until we can figure out a way to roll it out better. If not, then we'll have to discuss what the impact is of the additional work that has to be done. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else? Before we move on to our presentations, I would like to introduce a member of our audience, Dr. Tracy. Will you come forward just to the, to the mic, so we can welcome you? You don't have to speak, but I did.
All the while, oh, okay, good evening, and thank you for the welcome.
We did send out a letter to the school community, just letting them know, naming you as our interim superintendent, starting on July 1st, sharing that you would be in the district and at our meeting tonight, so since you were kind enough to join us tonight, I wanted to give you some camera time, so our community, who may not remember you from the last time you were in the district, can put a name to a face prior to July 1st. So, I thank you for joining us tonight, and for, you know, for already getting to work.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate that you're inviting me back. I checked with Ann in the personnel office to see if I would be getting tenure, since I'm back for the third time, and she said, "No, you have to show up for your fourth year before that happens," so, but thank you again for your interest in having me serve here, I'm looking forward to getting started. Mike's been great to help me learn the ropes, and meet new faces, and get reacquainted with people I worked with before, but I look forward to being with you for as long as it takes for you to find the next superintendent.
Thank you, and we look forward to working with you, and I, you know, did not want to put you on the spot like that, but you know, be forewarned. It might happen again. Thank you, you can either sit back there, if you want to sit, you know, and observe. Thank you. All right, moving on to presentation, Early Literacy Academy update. Mr. Mancusi, Mr. Cummings, I don't know if you have any opening remarks before we...
Just very briefly, my coming Superintendent, the Board had a presentation on Early Literacy Academy in December, and at the time, the Board requested that we come back with an end-of-year update on the progress of the Literacy Academy, which we are presenting to you this evening.
Thank you.
Rob Mancusi, Executive Director of Special Education, Timur Wright here, we have Zoe Dolan, our Special Education Coordinator for Elementary Special Education, we have special education teacher extraordinaire Erica Mueller, who is our Early Literacy Academy teacher at McKinley School, we have to my left Teresa Ginggrave, our principal, who welcomed us with open arms at McKinley School, and then from Literacy How, we have our good friend and excellent literacy coach, Allison Ibanez. So, as Mr. Cummings said, we gave a brief update on the Early Literacy Academy back in the winter. This is just an update for where students are now, so each of these ladies is just going to give a brief update. Some of the slides are reviews from the earlier presentation, just as a reminder of the purpose of the Early Literacy Academy, and the structured literacy course overview, and the PD that staff went through, and will go through again next year. So, with that, I will turn it over to Zoe Dolan.
Good evening, everyone. I want to start off with just thanking you guys for your ongoing support of this program. The collaboration has been awesome, to see the growth in this program, and we're thrilled that we're expanding it. So, as you know, this past year, in collaboration with Literacy How and Dr. Margie Gillis, the Fairfield Public Schools, we developed the Literacy Academy at McKinley to meet the literacy needs of our most impaired students with dyslexia or reading disabilities. We are excited that we are expanding this by one class with seven additional students. Next slide, please. So, currently, we have seven students enrolled in the Early Literacy Academy, five students currently in grade three, and then two students that are in grade two right now, for a few more days. Next year, as we expand our program, we asked for potential candidates from all the elementary schools. We carefully reviewed, everyone up here on this panel right here with me, we reviewed all the potential candidates from all 11 elementary schools that were given to us. We contacted parents, and we've already had an informational meeting with all the parents that agreed to attend. Let's see, and so, as of now, it looks like our 22-23 cohort is going to consist of three second graders, four third graders, and then six fourth graders, and we're excited to expand.
Thank you for having us. It's, as Zoe said, we are very excited about the program, we appreciate the support, the resources dedicated to it, and especially the time with Allison and Margie Gillis, and the impact it's had on kids, for sure. So, when we provided a sampling of data to you in December, it consisted of three students from the group. What you have in front of you are three data, three graphs showing data from the Fanta's and Pennell Benchmark Assessment System, which is the district-chosen benchmark system that we use to determine the student's instructional reading level. So, as part of our time with the kids, we spend a significant amount of instructional time and effort in really focusing on their phonological awareness, their understanding of morphology, grammar and syntax, and most especially, their connection between sounds and the written English language. But the ultimate goal of all that hard work is to be able to read and comprehend text in context. So, this, these three graphs show that in context of connected text, the students are really growing at a rate that we can expect to see, some really nice closure of the gap for them. Again, this is in connected text, so these students, while they still struggle perhaps reading words in isolation, and they definitely continue to require intensive instruction when it comes to encoding, spelling, they are applying what they've learned, and they are using, you know, syllable division rules, and their improved understanding of how written language translates to, translates to sounds, and ultimately, words and vocabulary. So, all three of these students chosen are showing significant growth, and the dotted line is the trend line, so where we would expect them to, I'm sorry, the orange line is the target for their grade, and then the dotted line is the trend line, showing, you know, how they're moving upward.
Can I just confirm with these, the same students that were, we profiled in the last presentation?
They are, yes. Yep.
Thank you.
I apologize, because this was probably covered the first time, but just, the goal, is that goal the same goal for non-literacy academy students, or is that a separate goal that is designed for them?
Yep, so, that's a good question. So, that, that orange goal line is the target instructional reading level for all students in, in the grade level. So, for example, if this student were a third grader, that's the benchmark assessment, the target level for all third graders at each interval in the year.
And I'm not sure if I have to throw this over to Mr. Cummings or Mr. Mancusi, if you could speak to it. When we are setting in the district improvement plan, that grade-two reading goal, is that what this orange line is for grade-two? So, that this is the, this is the data we should be looking at in terms of, are we achieving the goals of our district improvement plan for our students?
Yes.
So, in addition to the district's assessments, we also wanted to make sure that we were providing instruction and goals and objectives for our students that matched their needs, and part of that was doing some additional diagnostic assessments, and we presented these scores in December, but this is an update now, you see, we have scores from September, and then also from May. And this is just a sampling, again, this is the first of three sections on the assessment that we were given to the students at the beginning of the year. And so, you can see how their scores developed, again, this is for six, this is all six of the students, and this is what, we're so incredibly proud of the students, they worked so hard, and have been applying their strategies, not only in our Early Literacy Academy classrooms, but also in their general education classrooms, and that's what makes this program so powerful. And so, you can see, at the beginning of the year, they came in with some, some good skills in some of those areas, particularly, if you can look on the right side of the graph, the silent E in the open syllables portion, a lot of the students had yet to be instructed in that area, and so, we provided that instruction throughout the course of the year, and you could see the, the big jump that was made. So, we're so proud of them, of the work that they have put into this, and with our guidance, we expect them to continue to grow and learn, and through, there are additional phonics patterns that they have been exposed to, and we are continuing to monitor those as As part of our planning for next year, coaching will be provided, two days per week, so we have, again, an additional classroom coming with more students, and more, another special ed teacher, more para-professionals, and more general education teachers who need to be trained and coached and supported throughout the process of moving forward with our students, and helping them to generalize into, back into their classroom. Again, we also are going to have more professional development for those teachers, and those paras, and other teachers across the district, looking in the principles of structured literacy. Again, this is not new information for you, but again, what we do is we really, we really support, the job of a coach is to support, go in and plan, we talk about progress monitoring, we update goals and objectives, we set those goals, we progress monitor, we course correct if we need to, and this is all, like, individualized for students, and so, the relationship between the special ed teacher, general education teacher, paras, and coach is all, is very important, and we communicate all the time to ensure that we're doing what we need to do for these students. Perfect assessment. Just real quick, we do continue to look at assessments, and we progress monitor, again, to make sure that the students are getting what they need, and, and so that we can deliver that intensive structured literacy reading instruction for them.
So, Allison was our coach one day per week for the 21-22 school year. Next year, with the addition of the additional class, Allison's going to be with us two days per week. So, Teresa is just going to quickly review, and this isn't new either, it's just a review, the structured literacy course sequence that our special educators and general ed teachers who work with students in the Early Literacy Academy went through. That's the five-month course that they went through with Margie Gillis and Wendy North, so she'll just review that. And then, that will continue next year with two additional cohorts, and then Dr. Zavajansik will, is also working with Dr. Gillis, with his staff next year.
That's correct. So, there'll be two opportunities for the 30-hour course. Obviously, the new special ed teacher, they'll be teaching the fourth grade class as part of the course with two little of the course with two literacy para-professionals alongside two gen ed teachers in that grade. Just like we did last year, we had grade three and two gen ed teachers who received the literacy, special literacy students, collaborate with Erica, participate in 30-hour course that was done during the school day. We picked Tuesdays because we could go to 5:00. It is an intense course, requiring some practice in between sessions and debriefing back with Margie Gillis and Wendy North. Our LAS teams across the district were invited as well, and certainly this year, again, prior will be given to the McKinley staff, but with open spots for some of our colleagues in other schools. You see the specifics of the course, it really hasn't changed. High intensity, but with great opportunities for practice in between and debriefing with Margie Gillis. The idea is that the students in this fourth grade class are opening up as they finish their intense morning of the ELA block with their special ed teacher, the two literacy para-professionals, then can go to their class, join their class, continue on the day, but those teachers have the knowledge and the skills to continue to incorporate throughout the school day, and that the literacy paras accompany the students and start to see that generalization happen across all settings. So that is the plan, two sessions of 30-hour, of the 30-hour course going forward this year.
So each of these modules is six hours of training. That staff goes through each month of the training, and then obviously, they apply their new learning, they come back, and we discuss it, and then Allison and Erica will support the general ed staff in applying that learning to support students, particularly in the Early Literacy Academy across settings. And then this is just your current team members of our Early Literacy Academy. We're very grateful for their hard work this year, that they did with our students and our families, and we look forward to their continued success next year. So with that, that's our brief overview. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for the update. Take it to the board. Does anybody have any questions? Mrs. Max and Cannelly.
Thank you. A few questions. First of all, and I know I asked this before, but just checking in, what are we using for the physical space at McKinley? Again, I can't remember where we are for our course enrollment and the number of classrooms, but is that an issue in terms of keeping it at McKinley, that it's going to be a space issue?
We were creative, and we were able to secure two spaces that were serving as offices, but large spaces that were shared by staff. We have moved some things around, and we're able to have two, we are able to have two classrooms side by side, the second and third grade classroom and the fourth grade classroom.
Great. I also wanted to check, I had thought it was seven students per year, and so one of the sections is down to six?
We started with six, and then we added one, so I think one of the slides had six on there.
Yes, grade four.
Yeah, because she wasn't with us in September. She joined us mid-year, I forget, from...
Thinking of the seven in the fourth grade spot for next year.
Well, the point is, I thought at this point, we were...
There's six listed, right?
For next year, I thought we were serving 14 students.
Yes, so there is room. We left room for an additional student to join that fourth grade class, as we also did this past year. We had a second grader join, we had started with six, and we had a second grader join. So we're ending the year with seven. Next year, we could end the year with seven, we're going to start with six in the fourth grade group.
And I guess I'm unclear, if you had all these from 11 elementary schools, all of these students with identified needs, why aren't we starting with seven?
I can answer that. We have offered spots, and changing home schools is not always an easy decision. So right now, we do have one available spot left for next year, which is not a bad thing because we're constantly having PPTs reviewing progress, so it is nice to be able to offer for an appropriate, in an appropriate case, if we have an opening for a student to transition over to the Early Literacy, the Early Literacy Academy, like we did this year.
And so also because, so this was not an issue of, come to the McKinley program or you will be outplaced, it's choose the McKinley program, or you can stay and receive services in your elementary school, we just believe the McKinley program is stronger.
Absolutely. And we tell families, we understand. You know, last year, we had the same conversation with parents that we had yesterday for folks that were invited to the Early Literacy Academy next year, the new cohort. You know, fortunately, you know, all but one came to the Early Literacy Academy this year, and we are getting some parent testimonials to share with new parents because that is a question. We do hook up students and families who are, you know, choosing to come to the school but don't know anybody, so they can at least know somebody, or a family can have at least a connection to another family who's in a similar situation.
And this is looking a bit ahead, but are, do we have, has there been a decision made regarding what feeder pattern they'll follow after this? Is that something that would make a difference to families?
What we're telling families right now, because we do appreciate the difficulty in switching home schools, if students, for example, graduate out of the Early Literacy Academy, the family has the option to stay within the McKinley feeder pattern or to return to their, you know, home feeder pattern.
Okay. I just had two other questions. With all of the training that's going on, and I'm all for, you want the subject matter expertise, and from everything we've heard, you have the best that's servicing this program. Do you ever see this training resulting in it being a self-contained program to Fairfield Public Schools? Where we provide the leadership, we do the training, and I'm not necessarily advocating for it, because what's important is that the children get served, so maybe this isn't something where there's enough subject matter expertise. I don't, I'm ignorant of that, but I'm just asking if that's one of the goals.
My ultimate goal, or the ultimate goal, I think, of the Early Literacy Academy and the training that folks are going through, is that we will be able to meet the structured literacy needs of all students in their home school.
So that, so maybe a consultation basis, but not this type of bringing in outside help twice a week now?
Long-term, perhaps, once we build...
I understand you're not making any promises, I get it.
Yeah. I will tell you, a big part of the success of the Literacy Academy is our affiliation with Margie Gillis and with Literacy Howe and with quality literacy coaches like Allison. So, you know, people in the field of reading know Margie, they know the quality of work she does, and I say all the time, she chose to work with us, and we're very grateful for the relationship that we have with her and with Literacy Howe, because I do feel, long-term, you know, we're going to be able to, you know, transform the lives of a lot of students who otherwise would be struggling readers throughout their high school career, throughout their educational careers.
Thank you. And then just one last question, and maybe you could speak to this, or maybe Dr. Zavajancik needs to, but I was wondering how well this training and all of this coaching, how integrated is that, and how well is that collaborating with what the work we're about to do with the ELA program, pre-K through 12? Because obviously, those things that, you know, regarding the phonemic awareness and all of that, has to be a benefit to all of our readers, but obviously, that would be a lot, again, I'm just looking for the, what's the level of coordination there?
We began the year getting the principals ahead of this. So all of the principals, and someone alluded to it before, all of the literacy coaches within the elementary school have gone through the structured literacy training and/or the literacy leadership training at this point. Next year, our attempt, not attempt, but we are coordinating to make sure that this rolls back into general ed, so that everybody has some structured literacy training throughout. The goal over the next few years is to train the cohorts of teachers, starting with the kindergarten and first grade teachers and moving forward with that, so that it's not a leap to the Early Literacy Academy, and there's a sort of a spectrum within general education and throughout that this instruction is embedded. And we'll have to also coordinate with ELA review that's happening to make sure this gets codified and integrated within the documents that teachers are teaching throughout.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much for the presentation and your work on this. It's very exciting to see the progress that our students are making. Okay, moving on to social emotional learning presentation, Mr. Mankouzzi and Ms. Leffert, Mr. Cummings.
Yes, thank you. This goes back to a conversation we had just about a year ago. We were looking at changes within the adopted 21-22 budget, and Ms. Jacobson made the recommendation that we assign some money, some funding to support essentially an audit of our SEL program. As she correctly pointed out, a number of initiatives have been added over the years, and the connections between those initiatives and how they integrated both within the levels and across the levels was somewhat in question and may not be consistent across all the schools. So with Ms. Leffert and Mr. Mankouzzi leading the charge, and with our staff serving as essentially an oversight committee with them, Ms. Leffert has conducted that work and is here tonight to present her findings and recommendations for going forward.
Hi, good evening. Ann Leffert, and speaking tonight as the consultant for this work, the social emotional learning needs assessment. So we presented to you in January, gave you a brief update on where we were with the work that we were doing at that time. By no means was our work done, we were in the middle of the work. The more time we spent taking a look at what was in the district, the more we realized we had to dig further. So it's kind of a spider web of information that we worked together to identify and work towards what are the next steps for the district. So I'm not going, you've had the report for a week, I'm not going to walk through the whole report. The report goes over the strategies that were used in order to gain this information, so how we came about working with parents. We had some parent forums and received some information from families. We did some staff surveys. We did surveys of our SRBI teams and SEL teams to get some information on what's being used, what resources are being used in each building. We rolled out the DESA assessment, a universal screener. You know, from my work in the district, back to the days 10 years ago when I was a special ed coordinator, and we were rolling out, actually 15 years ago, rolling out SRBI work and merging and bringing together special education and general education and looking at our SRBI supports. At that time, we lamented the fact that we didn't have good universal screeners in the area of social emotional learning for students. We had great academic work at the elementary school, we could really identify where students needed interventions, but we didn't have that in the social emotional realm. And so we fell into the DESA mini with the state rolling out a pilot of that, that we joined the second grouping of that, and rolled out the DESA mini and the DESA this year as really our first steps towards identifying what data are we getting from that and how are we going to use that data going forward. So our process was multi-pronged. We relied on a lot of work, I researched a lot of the work of CASL, the group that really has done a lot of work nationally, and really relied on that. The state has adopted the CASL work as a framework for the state of Connecticut. Teachers had already, many had been already familiar with the CASL work and the CASL wheel, and we, as a committee, a district committee, and I thank them greatly for their work in providing to me information about the district that the committee was familiar with that I needed in order to complete this work. So the CASL group has a needs assessment, a document that can help us identify where are we, what are our next steps, and so that's part of the report that you saw in the appendix, identifies each of the areas where we need to do work, and then what are our next steps. So that helped us in coming up with the multi-year plan that really is the crux of what the work was. It was heavy lifting. We, as I said, relied on a committee to complete this work, and then the multi-year plan is something that I pulled together with all of the information we had gathered throughout the year. The decision was made to create a three-year, multi-year plan, and some of the work here, much of the work here was included in the district improvement plan as well. So as far as the process, I'll ask if there's any questions before we dive into that multi-year plan, and if you have any questions towards, about the plan.
Any questions about the process and the work that's been done over the last year? Ms. Max and Cannelly.
I have a few questions throughout the report. I'm not sure if this is the right time to bring it up, but I'll try. In looking at the review of the 2020-2021 school improvement plans, I'm not used to seeing goals like the ones we had for our pre-K in elementary, where these are definitely not SMART goals. They, I don't see where they are measurable and where accountability, self-accountability is embedded in them. Is this something that's going to change? So that, in terms of measuring progress, I don't see how these elementary school goals provide that.
So the information there was really taking a look at what was in those plans, and I was looking for resources in those plans. What were they targeting as far as resources to use in their building? There's been a whole revision of the school improvement plans, so I can't speak to that. I was not involved in that work, but there is a revision to the school improvement plans, and it is one of my recommendations that a focus on SEL work be a part of those school improvement plans.
If I can just comment, a big piece of the work that we have moving forward is to establish a clear and consistent SRBI/SEL structure across the district. And what that means is that we need to have, you know, do a lot of staff training in terms of providing quality tier-one SEL support for students, and then really identifying what tier-two and tier-three support students may need. And one of the things that the DESA mini is going to help us to do is to help identify, and it's, the DESA mini will be just one point, but it will be a very important point because it is a universal screener, and I cannot stress enough how important it is to have a universal screener for social emotional learning. So we can identify students early, provide them with the explicit instruction in the area identified, and then we can progress monitor and determine which students need additional support, which students need to be referred to PPT, or which students, you know, once we provide them the support, you know, they'll generalize their learning, they'll apply their learning, and then they will not need long-term service. All of that that I just described is required when we go to PPT or when we're at PPT and we're discussing identification of students who may qualify for special education under the emotional disturbance exceptionality. It does, the ED checklist does require that we be able to clearly articulate the tiered level of supports provided to students and their response to that intervention, and I will tell you, it's statewide, it's not just us here, that is an area of massive weakness in the future, that this plan, once we have that structure in place, will be able to, you know, will assist us greatly.
Except that I'm talking about our elementary school goals, as in these are part of our published school improvement plans, which are embedded in our district improvement plan. And when you have a goal such as, students and staff will aim to make each other feel emotionally and physically safe. Now, to be clear, of course, I enthusiastically support that idea, that's not what I'm raising as an issue. I'm questioning as an issue, how do you measure a school achieving that goal? For example, our school climate surveys, those gave very specific data points to, you know, I have an adult I can go to, you know, there was a whole, I feel safe in my school. The school climate surveys, I thought, were fabulous for the information they gave us and for specific areas we're looking to improve. These goals are not, provide no measure of accountability so that we know we're making, I just want progress. I don't question that these have great ideas, but how do we know if we're doing it?
The use of school climate goals for that purpose will not change, like in terms of, do students feel connected to at least one adult in their, in their school? Do the students feel safe in their environment? Do they know of at least one or two adults that they can go to for help? The climate results, that's a data point that will be used in helping us determine the effectiveness of our SEL or district improvement plan related to that.
Let me just add too, these were, these were the broad descriptive goal in the area of SEL on those school improvement plans. There was a lot more information included with each of those goals. I don't know, Dr. Zavajancik, if you have something to add there.
I don't know, Dr. Zavajansik, if you have something to add there? And they were two years ago.
Just to repeat, I think we're in agreement about the, all of us about the school climate goals. Those do still become goals within the administrator evaluation plans and so forth. We're also, as Ms. Leffert said, redesigning the templates and the way we do the school improvement plans so that they are linked to a SMART goal, also specifically to attendance that students feel, come to school essentially, and when they're there, they do feel safe, connected, and valued within there. And those strategies will be delineated within, within that SMART goal as well.
Okay, so to Ms. Leffert's point then, this may have appeared on, and again, because I also very much appreciate that we have school improvement plans that are specific to the data of a school. What is needed at one is not needed at the other. So what you're saying is that this was delineated with measurable thing, components under it. This was just the broad, this was more the mission. The measurable goal is simply something that isn't included in this report.
Correct. I was looking for what was in each school and what they were identifying. And really, you've made my point for me in the fact that each school is identifying for their school what they've noticed from their school climate surveys, from any of the surveys they've done for the administrator evaluation plan as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Kelly?
Super quick, and I apologize if it was in here. I know we gave parents and students the option to opt out of this, and I was wondering if you had any statistics on, is it statistically relevant how many people opted out or is it rounding error?
You're talking about the DESA mini and the DESA?
Parents were given the opportunity to opt out of the DESA mini. I don't have the number. I can get that. It wasn't-
Like, was it statistically relevant?
No. I'd say district-wide, there's maybe 10 or 12. Okay. No, not even close.
Anyone else? Okay.
So I just want to touch on-
Ms. Jacobson, you have-
I was going to touch on recommendations. Did you have something about the process?
Okay.
So, so what was very clear, number one, the charge of my work with this committee was to come up with a multi-year plan. So that's what you see here and attached to this document. I felt it was very important that we have a steering committee. And I, my hope is that many members that worked on the committee this year will continue on in that advisory role next year. So this is a smaller group of folks. I'm proposing that we have a much broader representative district SEL committee. I'm looking for that to have a broader base of parents on that, teachers, looking for students at the high school level to really broaden our reach in that group as well as community members. So that will be the work of, my recommendation is that this committee forms in September to help the district through the process of the implementation of the SEL work that I'm recommending. I'm recommending that there be three committees, subcommittees to that group. The first one that I think is really critical, and this is work that we had hoped to do this year, but there's a Pandora's box in this. This program review subcommittee is really taking a look at what we have now, and there's been a recent survey done of all of the school buildings to identify that. And you saw that data in the back of the plan in one of the appendices, is to look at what we have and make recommendations for what are we going to use in each of the buildings. Some of the resources that are being used are really more of a strategy. It's not really an instructional piece. It doesn't have a program with it. Castle does have a whole list of recommended programs that have been researched over time for efficacy. So that could be something that the committee decides to use in their work, the subcommittee. I'm recommending that there be a pilot, that we identify the resources by December. There is some funding available that we can get a pilot started with some training for smaller groups of folks and do that work through, through the spring. But in the meantime, also have a placeholder for the 2324 budget, knowing that we want to bring forward some SEL resources and training across the district. The research really talks about a, an evidence-based explicit instruction in the area of SEL has the most benefit for students and helping them really gain those skills, starting at a young age, to be resilient, to be understanding more their social needs themselves and to go forward with that. Then second subcommittee that I'm recommending is a professional learning subcommittee. There's a lot of work to be done here. Part of the early part of my multi-year plan is to focus on adult SEL. All the research talks about if our adults are not comfortable or feel good in their social emotional area, in their realm, in that realm, they're not going to be able to work with students there. So there's a lot of work out there and resources to tap into to provide some professional learning to our adult staff members. The third is that there'd be a subcommittee to take a look at SRBI and MTSS. And I propose, knowing that there's that work happening in the district improvement plan, that this committee work with, with that committee through the district improvement plan and take a look at data points that are relevant to determine progress for students in this area of social emotional learning and to identify targets of when would a student, what can we do in tier-one? What would identify a student to go to tier-two? And what would those supports look like? And the same thing for tier-three. And those would be identifying interventions for kids. We've already talked about the DESA. I believe that the DESA mini should continue. That universal screening, I think, is going to be a powerful tool for the district going forward. And in fact, there are probably 80 or 90 school districts around the state that are, that are also implementing this DESA. I talked about adult SEL already within the scope of that professional learning subcommittee. I believe we need to have further information out to our parents and the community at large about social emotional learning. So I make some recommendations in the plan about how we can do that. I think the parent forums should continue. This year, we had two parent forums with a representative from each school. I believe that dialogue was more important with these, with parents rather than just a simple survey out to families. And we had a lot of great conversations at both of the parent forums that were run this year. I believe that there's an easy way for teachers, once they understand the competencies in Castle, to build in some simple activities in their classrooms. DESA is implemented through the Aperture Education, is their parent company. There are some great resources there in an area called growth strategies. If you feel that your student needs to, students in your class need some work in social awareness, there are some activities by grade level that a teacher can implement very simply in their classroom. SEL strategies should be considered when curriculum documents are reviewed. The state of Connecticut is currently developing SEL habits for grade levels. They've developed those for grades, for grades K through three. Think of those as kind of standards that you'll see in curriculum documents as well, but to consider those in curriculum documents going forward. SEL goals should continue to be in school improvement plans. And we're looking to identify an SEL contact person in each building to be a liaison between the committee, the district committee, and to identify what's going on in their buildings and to bring back information to their buildings. So those are my recommendations, which led into the multi-year plan.
Ms. Jacobson, do you have a question now?
Thank you both for putting this together and to all the people that helped you do it. I had a feeling that when I thought of this idea to do an assessment, which you're calling an audit now, was that it might become unwieldy just hearing about all the years, all the things that teachers were using or that we were implementing or doing PD on. So this program review subcommittee, that as you're now calling it, was kind of the only idea at the time, coupled with what's working and not working, let's focus. So I appreciate how much broader you guys were able to go beyond that initial thought. And it did not surprise me per se that how many things are being implemented in different places. And this is so helpful to get a better understanding of what's being utilized. And I just want to say, I appreciate the work going into this and that. I hope that as we move forward with it, we will be able to focus on the things that you have found that are really going to be the most beneficial to all our kids. The one thing I did have a question on was that, in here, it said that while we have all of those resources that are currently being utilized and the goal is to hopefully focus a little bit more at each of the levels, the statement, I'm on page four, guys, if anyone knows, was that, that to inform decision-making for committee-based tasks with a resource to be used at one level. Just wanted to clarify from this very long list of 30-plus items, are you looking to have one main at each level? I just wanted to make sure I understood that one sentence.
Yeah, I probably should have not used the word "a." That's really going to be for the purview of that subcommittee, to take a look at what is being used. So for example, if a building is actively using MINDUP, we had extensive training on MINDUP, so I'll use that as an example, several years ago, right before the pandemic. So if a school building is using that and feels that they can demonstrate that their students are making progress with it, why would we take that away from them? So I think the committee has to consider that, what's being implemented in the building. You know, we have resources. The district has been great and, you know, this isn't brand new. We have a lot of resources in the buildings, as you saw, and some of them are being used broadly. Some are used just pieces. So it's the fidelity piece, I think, that's really important to take a look at.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I didn't misinterpret that to mean that you're going to be giving them one resource to going forward at each of the levels.
You know, I think that's for the committee to determine based on the makeup of the committee and make sure that we have representation from, from each of the buildings.
And the other thing I found really interesting is in the appendix was, did you find it interesting that variances between the schools in terms of what they felt was most important or not? I mean, did you find that interesting or did you kind of expect that would be the outcome?
I'm not surprised, and I found it interesting. It's really dependent on the makeup of each of the buildings. You know, having been in this district for a very long time and having been in a position to be in all of the buildings, there's a, there's a community feel to each of the buildings that's different in each, in each one that you go into. And so I think it's important for each of the buildings, and it is what I recommended, that they identify what their needs are when they come to professional learning because not all 11 elementary schools or all three middles or all three high schools or the ECC are all going to need the same thing as far as professional learning. And I think the schools have to have the autonomy to identify what that professional learning is for them in their building.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Ms. Maxicanelli?
Thank you. To that point, while I completely agree with autonomy and that all of our schools have different identities, that doesn't mean all of our schools have the resources to know what's research-based, you know? And that's obviously where your district committee is vital. I mean, using something because it's what you're familiar with does not mean you're getting results and therefore does not mean you should be allowed to continue to use it. I mean, if we're going to make, this is a massive investment, as much in time as money. Because if there's anything that we know about our elementary schools is that those schedules are crazy. With all the things that we want to be able to accomplish in those years and those hours, time is precious and we can't afford to spend it on something that you might be comfortable with, but it's not doing anything for you or for the kids.
Yeah, and you'll notice, I'll explain if, what I noticed on the lists, especially the first list that was developed, is that many, some of the resources are not an actual program of implementation with a series of lessons perhaps to implement or have direct instruction necessarily for students. So we're going to be looking at, or the committee will be looking at, it won't be me, will be looking at what are those resources that are research-based? And that's the work that they'll do in each of the, each of the different levels. I don't expect either that any, all the levels are going to pick the same thing or that they're not going to pick the same thing. It's really, I don't, I don't think this committee has an idea ahead of time of what's going to come of that work. It's going to be hard because in some cases, there may be a decision made that X resource that you're using is not really something that, that we're seeing much efficacy. So we want to switch to this one. This is going to be the plan that we're using and will provide training for you, for everyone. And I, I can't stress enough, the most important piece of this is the ongoing training. An example, we had responsive classrooms in place years ago and trained teachers and trained all the new teachers, and then it just became something we couldn't keep up with. It kind of fell by the wayside, and you hear morning meeting going on in, in the buildings, but we haven't been able to keep that training up. I think it's important that our new teachers are trained. How do we identify that? And this is what the committee will have to work towards.
To that point, I was looking at PBIS, which I thought was going to be, you know, shining green all over the place, and it's barely a blip. And that was the hot topic, even what, three years ago, four years? I might be making that up, but, so that, I agree. So I, because the other thing that I was surprised at is that don't, most of these come with some, we've been budgeting for these. I know we budgeted and discussed MINDUP. That's the one that's most vivid to me. So that was the other part that I was surprised, that there were so many discrepancies in terms of what we're using. And I'm not saying, maybe they're all great. I don't know. But I'm surprised that it got so varied because I assume they come with a budget impact. And therefore, why wasn't it more mainstream? Why wasn't it more consistent? I don't know if you know that.
I can't answer that. I think it's, it's, I think you'll, you'll notice in the charts that I did with the most recent assessment of what's being used, one of the questions was, who was trained on it? And in some cases, you'll see it was just, just support staff were trained to work with specific students, or you'll see that a grade level was changed, or trained, rather, or all grade levels were trained and they all have the resource. So it varies widely by building and by level.
Okay. Thank you. And I do have a bunch of other questions, so I'll try to get through them quickly. Because I do think the parent piece to this is really important, not just because parents might need it themselves or that awareness, but so that there's, we get a lot, we've gotten a lot of questions. Ms. Kelly, I think kind of referenced a little bit before with that whole opting out idea, but we are a suspicious community. I mean, it's a suspicious time of people are wondering, what are you doing in this classroom with our students? What is SEL? What are you doing with our children? Is there a thought to maybe doing this as part of the open house night?
Nothing specific from my, from my recommendation. My recommendation is, as part of the parents, is A, to have them involved in the district committee. I think we need to have that parent representation. And B, I'm recommending that there be a specific dedicated spot on the website so that there are resources there for families. The plan is there. There are resources for them to try at home with their students as well if they'd like. So I see this research on there. Again, there'll be, the committee will be working on what gets populated there. But I don't, none of this is scary stuff. This is all about helping kids become more resilient. And there's nothing subversive here in any, in any way, shape, or form. It's how to build relationships. It's how to understand and take perspective of others. Tenacity, perseverance, getting along with others, making responsible decisions. All of that is, is what comes together to help students develop skills in that area as they grow older. And, and that's what our, that's what our goal is here.
I agree. I think there were some questions on the surveys that are what prompted a negative reaction. I don't, I remember one, I think that's what it was coming from. So it's, you know, another part of the website could be a, here's what we're doing now, you know, so that they, that transparency is what parents are, I think, especially, because I agree with what you just said, who, who wouldn't want that for their child? Of course we do. But how it's being done is what parents are going to want to have a, you know, eye into, which I think would be really helpful.
I agree with the transparency.
So again, so that was, that was my idea of the open house night because you have one dedicated forum where that's the only thing that's happening and 16 people show up. And for those 16, based on the comments in this report, they found it invaluable. But the fact that only 16 show up tells you what our parents' lives are like. So that's why I was just thinking, the open house night, when they're all coming there anyway, if half an hour before the principals kickoff, there can be this. And again, still voluntary for, it's just an idea.
Yeah, only, and let me just clarify, there were 16 because we picked a representative from each building. I reached out to the PTA presidents of each of the buildings, and we did it that way. We had two buildings that couldn't attend.
Okay, so that, my misunderstanding, I thought that was an open call and 16 showed up. Okay, thank you. There was a data point in here, and I can't remember what it was, and I just wrote down that, that certain results were not going to be released to Fairfield until the fall. And I was wondering if, I think it was something dealing with the high school students, that the survey results or something?
No. So in the rollout of the DESA, the initial rollout, students in grades K through eight, the teachers identify, answer those eight questions on the DESA mini for their students in their classes. In the high school, grades nine to 12, it's a broader list of questions that high school students, it's a self-report. And we were all set to go, and the state pulled the plug on the high school one and said, we need more time to work with Aperture Education. So it wasn't our, our recommendation. It was the state saying, I think there was something with their contact.
Oh, so they haven't even taken it yet?
Correct.
Got, okay. I thought it was that they were holding the data and not giving to us. I'm like, what's going, yeah, never mind.
That's the English, that's the English teacher in you, Ms. Maxicanelli.
Yeah, sorry. Do you anticipate DESA remaining a resource for the district?
We asked that question of the state, and for the foreseeable future, we've been told yes. There's never any guarantee, but for the foreseeable future, we've been told yes.
Thank you. Two other questions and I'm done. I found one, one comment by a parent interesting, that there has been no meat to our SEL until now. And I didn't have that perception. Do you know, like, what is it that they were seeing, that they were not perceiving that we've been doing? I mean, again, we've had that school climate survey forever.
Right, but that's a survey. So what I perceived that response to be is they just didn't know what was going on in their buildings. They weren't quite sure what falls under SEL or what, what supports might have been used or resources that were being used. And I think that's, that kind of a sentiment speaks to the, as you said, the transparency that we need to have and the information we need to get out to parents about what we want to use in the district with our children.
Thank you.
Can I just follow up on that?
Sure.
Can I also follow up on that, just in terms of the school? Do you foresee there still being, you know, we have these committees, SEL committees. What role do you see them playing with school climate committees? If schools still have school climate committees? I see some overlap there potentially.
There is definitely some overlap there. And, you know, SRBI, SEL, we have SEL folks in some of the buildings identified, SRBI folks, school climate. I think there needs to be a tightening up of that. We know that there are probably 1,000 committees in each of our buildings, and we run out of people to sit on them. So I think there has to be some collaboration there on who sits on those committees and what we call it.
My last question, I'm sorry, which is probably one of my meteor questions, is how does this get embedded in curriculum? So that, you know, we're about to look at ELA, and we're about to look, I think it's business. How does that happen? Because that's, I just don't get that.
I had a great conversation with Jen Swangler, and she's had some experience with doing this, and she's currently working on some of the curriculum for the upper levels in ELA. One of our parents, at the second parent night, we talked about the DESA, and we talked about embedding strategies. And his question was, I don't see how you do this in a science class. And I said, well, I think a good example is, one of the areas of the wheel is to look at relationship building and decision-making. Gosh, there's a great way to do that when you're working with a lab partner, and you have to get along, and you have to figure out who's doing what work and how they do it together. I think what's more important here is, as this work goes on, this is not going to happen immediately. As our teachers work on their own SEL first, and gain a better understanding of what skillsets are involved, we can start looking at how that work gets embedded. I don't know if you had a chance to take a look at the K through three standards that I linked in that document. The state of Connecticut has put that together. I thought we would have had grades four through six already, but we don't. But I see that that piece will be something that curriculum review committees can look at as a strategy piece of how to embed some of this work into a curriculum document. There are smarter people than me, people than me, who can figure out, you know, what exact, what resources they need to do that. But I think the state document, as they go in the years, is going to be a great resource for them. And I also think the work, we're going to be doing work, or the district will be doing work with the district leadership team in August at the advance, to talk about this SEL work. And Mr. Mancusi will lead that with them, so that our district leaders are on board with it.
It just still seems like a huge topic. I just don't have my head wrapped around how we make sure this is thoughtfully done across all of these subjects, across all of these grades, vertically and horizontally aligned. I mean, this is just a beast.
Spider web.
Yeah. And so that's, obviously, that district committee is going to be vital to that part of making sure that this is, again, research-based, proven effective with our students, and done. Again, I just, it's going to be astounding to watch this unfold. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Mr. Mancusi, you have a question?
I just wanted to give Ms. Lefort a big thank you, and Mr. Cummings especially, for recommending that we reach out to Mrs. Lefort. The work, when I first spoke with her, she was hesitant to take this on when I spoke with her last May, and I can't believe it, it was over a year ago. And we met last June and, you know, convinced her, after having a conversation with Dr. Hatzitz, on trying to keep this internal and homegrown. And, you know, the work that she did and how she led our group was commendable, and it was an absolute pleasure to work with you on this, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Mr. Mancusi, and thank you, Ms. Lefort, for your work on this. And I agree, you were a perfect person, just your relationships and your knowledge of the district, and being able to look at it from a lot of different angles, and just the years of experience and relationship that you have, I think you added a level that an outside person would not have been able to bring. So thank you for, both of you, for the presentation. Okay, moving on to old business. We are going to continue our discussion of the district improvement plan update. We had our first read at our last meeting. At that time, we didn't have this information on the SEL multi-year plan, and there were still some outstanding questions. So I wanted to put it back on the agenda for some follow-up. I'm not going to have Mr. Cummings go through the plan again, but we'll take it to the board for any questions, and if need be, we can call up parts of the plan on the screen. Any questions? Ms. Guernsey?
I don't really have a question, but I just wanted to say that I found the whole question and answer process to be really helpful, reading other people's questions, and also appreciating the responsiveness of the answers to my own. So thank you for that process.
You're welcome. And I want to, first of all, thank the board for submitting the questions, usually on time. But also the executive team responded to the questions so promptly and with thoroughness and the follow-ups that then came. It was very helpful, and it is part of the iteration of looking at the plan. You know, your contributions have clarified some pieces that needed to be clarified, and brought out some pieces that needed to be highlighted, and I just want to thank the board for bringing that perspective to it.
Ms. Jacobson?
Couple points. First, I answered, I put in some questions, so I got a lot of my answers from that. And I just wanted to say thank you for some of the targets that were changed, that I had concerns around, so I appreciate taking another look at that very much. I realize that some of this is still TBD, DB, to be determined as we wait on, I'm stuck between DBT and TBD right now. As we wait for incoming information that we don't have yet. So I understand some of this how is still to be determined. But one question I do have is, or I have two questions really. One was around how we're not going to be able to use STAR anymore as our universal screener, because the state's going to not allow those anymore, for that purpose anyway. I understand, and I know you don't know what you're going to pick yet, from what we're going to be given. But my other question is, if, just broadly speaking, and maybe you haven't figured this out from the state yet, or they haven't told you, if we can't use computer adaptive as our screeners anymore, which is STAR, how can we still be using them for our mastery?
Are you speaking about within the district improvement plan?
Connecting it to also what we have to do for the state. So we're not going to be able to use STAR. I'm sure you haven't picked, or you haven't picked yet, right? No, okay. But do you see what I mean by this confusion? Like, our kids have gotten, just when it was the hot ticket, you know, 15, 16, now it's not the hot ticket. So what do you think about that?
So STAR and some of the other adaptive tests haven't fallen on the, what they call the tier-one list of acceptable assessments for the State Department for some time. The legislation really centers around dyslexia, so it's really a K-three screener we're looking at. So you can use the adaptives in upper grades. It's the lower grades that become problematic because of the independent skills that they're looking to assess, in terms of letter, letter sound naming, for example, which adaptive computer tests can't, can't target or give us data on, that some of the other assessments have more valid and reliable measures with. We are planning on conducting an assessment review to make sure that we have stakeholder input on which assessments are best for which areas moving forward. But to your point, we haven't identified them because the, obviously, the legislation had happened, and then the state academic office put out their requirements moving forward, and we have to respond to those and act within them. We also have about a year to get that done for the K-three legislation.
Thank you. I'm sure it's to be determined and forthcoming. Thank you. My other question, I'm guessing, might be for Dr. Parrish. Maybe not, just some of the, before we move on, this is my last question. Some of the non-academic, you know, our sped prevalent prevalence rates and absenteeism rates, those other indicators, how are you feeling, generally speaking, for the 21, 22 school year that hasn't been put in our charge yet? But in terms of, across those areas, that we are pretty much done with school now, in meeting that first-year benchmark?
Well, the benchmarks aren't set for meeting it at the end of this year, but based on what we've seen thus far.
The yearly reduction, the yearly change is what I'm talking about.
They'll be pretty aggressive, especially since we've adjusted the attendance goals. Just based on what we've seen thus far this year, chronic absenteeism is on par. You know, it's a little bit less than what it was last year, but it's not resuming the levels that it was pre-pandemic.
And just about the other areas, though, there was the reduction in sped identification, there was the suspension, those other things. Are you feeling good that we're on the track for those yearly changes that you're expecting to see in this first year?
Well, we haven't received the actual data from the state on, in terms of our suspensions for the year, like that composite data that they provide at the end of the year. So I guess I'm not understanding your question.
You know, how many kids we have suspended at this point?
I don't know off the top of my head, no. I would have to pull that. That would be something I would have to pull.
All right, just maybe, as we get, maybe in the fall or something like that, we can get a 21, 22, you know, update or something like that, just so we have those numbers plugged in there, so we can track as we move along.
Yes, so that was the plan, is there's a spot in the spreadsheet for the current school year.
September. I got it.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Christine.
Mr. Cummings, you have something to add?
No, I was, Dr. Parrish just said, I was just simply going to say that, I think there's a space in there, and that essentially this should be something that the board reviews with the administrative team at the beginning of every year. That full suite of the data, where we are, and of course, where we've come as the DIP progresses.
Of how we finished, how we're starting, and then it just cycles through that way. Gotcha.
That's right. Particularly if, you know, we're going to have to look at adjustments in some of those goals as we go forward. But I certainly think that that at least annual review is going to be critical, given that a lot of this information, just as you look at SBA scores in the fall, that information becomes available over the course of the summer.
Any other questions? Ms. Max Canelli?
I'm trying to get caught up on all of the comments and the follow-up, and if I have any others, you'll hear from me shortly. But I think, I just want to thank you, because obviously, I know I put in a boatload of them this weekend, and thank you so much for all of those answers. A couple I'd wanted to check, one, actually, I forget who answered it, but it was regarding the middle school intervention blocks, and that, I just wanted to kind of be clear that that's sort of in the district improvement plan, a bit of a misnomer at this point in time, correct? Because there are not going to be, there was the question, excuse me, the answer referenced that we're doing the push-in during the class time, so it's not an intervention block, per se, you know, reminiscent of when we were calling it the win block, or whatever else we're having. So that, the name is, it was the name that had thrown me, which is what had prompted my question. So what the future holds, we still don't know, because that's going to be an ongoing work of this year with the FEA and administration finding something that works.
Correct. Part of our plan that we mapped out with the FEA leadership was to use the 22, 23 year school year to identify what the actual intervention system would be. In the interim, the interventionists that are being, that are within the school will be providing push-in as the predominant mechanism, but pull-out when appropriate. That would be, they would still be providing intervention, it just would be on not a formalized period in the form of the win period that we had previously presented.
And if, I can ask, obviously, a lot of this is going to be a lot of talking around this, but what kind of measurable way are we attacking how well does this work? What would prompt us to look elsewhere? Because if someone just, again, I come back to the idea with, you know, the mind up and all of the SEL strategies we've been using, someone might get comfortable with this quickly. That doesn't mean it's achieving progress. So I was wondering, what are we, do we, does staff have in mind anything now for how they're going to evaluate how well this is working?
So we already have an SRBI process within the middle school, and part of the work that Dr. Swangler has integrated into the district improvement plan is the transition to the MTSS process. So part of that work will, you know, part of SRBI period is progress monitoring the students that are within that intervention system, identifying whether or not the strategies that are being implemented are actually being successful in supporting students and moving students out as needed, but also adding levels and layers of support as needed. So that's something that's already been established. Our SRBI teams, as the middle school teams, have talked about many times. They are very highly effective, highly motivated, and really dive deep into the data, disaggregating it, looking at those different populations of students to identify what their academic needs are, as well as their socio-emotional and behavioral needs.
Okay. Thank you for that. I also wanted to follow up on another question I had asked regarding the revising of the school climate survey, because I'd been very worried about doing that, because every time we change it, it therefore renders it not as effective when we are trying to compare. I know when we last had the presentation about the school climate survey, part of the big problem was we were asking things with a whole bunch of new options for answers, therefore trying to get a measurement over time, over years, of how are we doing it achieving this goal? It's rendered ineffective every time we change it. And so I didn't understand the answer that, that the purpose of changing is because the current climate surveys are not conducive to action steps, and I didn't see that. I don't, I guess I, I thought they were rather conducive to. They gave very specific points of focus, certainly were, I would think, thought-provoking for staff if a building gets identified as, you know, only 20% of children feel that they have an adult to talk to. That was, I'm picking a ridiculous number, because nobody was in that range. But I guess, so I'm just back on the, before we go and change that, I'm really nervous about, I can see taking one question and then trying to break it down into more, but changing our data points where we're going to be gathering this, we then lose, not only from during COVID, but before COVID. I'm just very nervous about it, in case I'm now repeating myself. So I was wondering if I could hear a little bit more about that.
Sure. I can speak to this. I think the current issue, and I don't want to speak for, from what, because the principals primarily wrestle with the information that they get from the climate surveys. There's two fundamental issues with the climate surveys. The first is that a very small percentage of people respond to them. And so you get, you don't have, your data skewed one way or another, you know? Could be overly optimistic, overly pessimistic on some of the data points. And we have to figure out and work on ways to increase participation, so that we're getting a healthier number with which to respond. I think the second issue that I've heard from the principals is...
May I ask a quick follow-up to that? Do you attribute that to the number of questions or the time of the year when it's, when parents are asked to complete it?
I think it's both. I think it's both. And, you know, sometimes when people are trying to increase their survey participation, right, they build the survey into events that are already happening at the school, or types of things, like people are in hand, right? And I think those are things that we have to look at as a district in order to increase the participation, and therefore the health of the data that we're looking at. But related to that is that the principals have shared that they've not necessarily found that the questions have been written, they're written in a way that are, make it difficult to figure out where to go next, because when you're asking some of these questions, you're not sure if it's specific grade levels. I'm just making this particular issue up, but I'm not making it up, I'm just highlighting one particular issue, I'm not making anything up. Are we talking about specific grade levels, specific classrooms, specific settings? Those are the types of things that they've, that the questions don't necessarily get at right now. So when we're moving to problem-solving, the definition of the problem is ill-defined because of, again, the participation rates, and two, the lack of clarity among some of the answers. We had wanted to do, revise the climate surveys this year, and we just never got to it. So one of the commitments we're making in the DIP is that year one, beginning in the fall, we're going to ask the principals to be more involved with this. This is something that's been given to them in the past. We've used survey questions, well, admittedly, Dr. Jones and I worked on it. I remember being in the blue room for a few hours, working on the questions and trying to narrow several samples down. We want the principals to be involved in the creation of the questions, so that we're getting more, better information for them, and then settle on a plan... getting more, better information for them, and then settle on a plan, to your point, that we can use in the years going forward.
Would it be possible to use, or at least identify questions within the survey that either were very useful or had given us data that was negative in nature so we don't lose? I mean, obviously, the positive stuff, you want to tweak that, you know, go ahead, but, you know, the stuff where that is identifying an area we need to work on, I would hate to lose the question.
I think we certainly can go off of prior questions, other survey questions, but we also want to look at something that we would like to establish, some way to make statistically viable for the, for the building use and for the district use.
Would it make sense to have it as part of the administrative evaluation, that they achieve a response rate?
It could be. Right now in the administrative evaluation is, you know, they do have a stakeholder goals, the things that are often tied to this, so that might be a process piece that we'd have to look at, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Well, yeah, just a follow-up to that, just a suggestion moving forward, having been on years ago, the district school climate survey where a group of parents sat in this room and reviewed survey questions and gave feedback, and just to date myself, do you think that we need a question asking about jeweling in the high school? And people were like, what's that? I don't think that that's an issue. I don't think we have to worry about that. So I think that, you know, getting some, maybe some stakeholder feedback from parents, even some students, might be a valuable exercise. And as a former PTA president who sent out many, many, many emails reminding parents to fill out their school climate survey, I, you know, I, I think it's a challenge to put that on the principals. I think that we need to be kind of creative in terms of getting, putting it out there and maybe as the board, maybe we just say before anybody can, you know, stop right now and fill out your school climate survey, we'll send out the link during a board meeting. I'm, all right. I'm going off on a tangent here. All right, back to the questions at hand, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, sorry.
Let me just ask one follow-up. If, if I have any additional questions or follow-up to the answers that I got, should I put them in that follow-up column or at this point should it be via email?
Well, I had locked it down, but-
That's what I, that's why I was wondering. I mean, in looking it over, I think I've asked what I have, I want, but I do want to check it.
I think the quickest thing probably right now would be just shoot me an email.
Thank you.
For anybody. And I, I just wanted to, Mr. McCusie, you were taking notes on all those ideas, right? Just now? Yes.
I'll email you. Ms. Jacobson.
As we move forward, are we going to have a, we have a district improvement page, so to speak, or under a page, just for archival purposes, we will, once approved, keep what was our district improvement plans for, you know, historical understanding and knowledge, but then put all of these documents up on top of that once they're done, right, on the website so we can all refer back to them?
Yes, similar to like the facilities page, something like that, where we keep the history?
Just keep the, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, so we're going to put this, it'll be on our next agenda for a vote. If any board members have follow-up questions, I, as Mr. Cummings said, please email him directly as soon as possible. You know, we have about one week left of school, and hopefully some of our administrators and staff will be able to take some time off before the end of the school year, so I want to be sensitive to their time and also to board members getting the information that they need prior to the vote. Okay, moving on, approval of Riverfield Educational specification for partial roof project. Can I have a motion? The Board of Education approved the Riverfield Educational specification for the partial roof project. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Jacobson. Any follow-up questions on this? Seeing none, we'll take it to the public. Any public comment on this? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote. All in favor? Motion carries eight-zero. Approval of the Robert, oh, excuse me, approval of Sherman Educational specifications for partial roof project. The Board of Education approved the Sherman Educational specifications for the partial roof project. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Rotelli. Any discussion? Seeing none, take it to the public. Any public comment? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote. All in favor? Motion carries eight-zero. New business, moving on, first reading of policies. Mrs. Maxine Cannelly.
Thank you. So the first, I guess I shall take them one at a time. So the advanced course or program in challenging curriculum policy, this is coming to us as a mandate from the state for approval by the end of the month. You know, I invite you to take a look through this. This has been put through the wringer a few times. My, I feel comfortable saying the policy committee very much thanks Dr. Zavijanzik for his work on this, because we, this started as two different policies, well, as one, then two, back to one, reformatted, redundancies stripped out, so I'm very much looking forward to board comments on it. If there are any questions at this time, I'd be happy to try to tackle them now. Otherwise, as always, if I can get feedback on this, or, excuse me, questions on this sooner rather than later, because again, in case Dr. Zavijanzik is not around for me to ask him for questions, I'll need time to adjust for that. Anything at this time? Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, just, this is brand-new, and so was this constructed completely by the policy committee? Or did you get language, like a template that you're working from? So how, how did that process work?
Thank you.
So many of our policies are, you know, change, you know, adapted from older policies, so just this brand spanking new one, I'm just, I think would be helpful to understand the process.
Thank you. I'm clearly a little bit rusty on bringing policies to the committee, because I'm fumbling a little bit. Thank you for asking that question. There, in fact, there is no existing policy, which is why you have this as a single draft. You know, there's no strike-through, there's no red language, this is brand-new. So we did receive, actually, Dr. Zavijanzik, if you want to come up, just to speak to the sourcing and your perception of the degree to, because you would have a better sense of this than the committee, the degree, the percentage to which we deviated from the source documents in making this a Fairfield district versus what you had received?
So this legislation passed in 2021, and it, the state board had to essentially create a committee and some draft guidance to State Department of Education, I should say, on how to sort of tackle the legislative intent of this. They put out two policies through CAEB on identification and eligibility for challenging curriculum in advanced programs. Shipman also put out a policy, one policy on both of these. As Ms. Maxine Cannelly said, there was quite a bit of redundancies among the three, so the committee had asked to take them and sort of develop one policy that kept the intent of the legislation and the intent of the three policies, but streamlined it so that it was understandable to the public and to the implementation for the faculty and staff.
Thank you for asking that. Any other questions? And again, just, I hope everyone is clear on the intent of this, because I think this is, policy is also very much consistent with what we are aiming to do with the district improvement plan. That idea being of finding a path, encouraging a path, and most importantly, supporting a path towards more of our students enrolling in these advanced courses, and that's not just AP courses. That's one type of advanced course. And so that idea of, you know, really supporting this effort through planning, through parent communication, that's really all a part of this. So again, quite consistent with what we're trying to do via the district improvement plan. So again, any questions would be great if, Ms. Vitale, if I'll just move on to the next one. So this is really, I'd hope this would be a more exciting policy, it's not, to be blunt. The previous gifted and talented students program, actually, this one, we do have something on, and we didn't send that out. Let me check up on that in terms of what we'd already had as existing policy on this. So this, but this is such a change from what had been there. It's really mostly about definition, and definitely the, one new tweak to this is expanding it to the arts and that identification. However, still the idea of how these students are served or is left up to the district, which again, I was very pleased when Mr. Cummings added that to the district improvement plan, that we will also be taking, separate and apart from this policy, a closer look into how these students are served, because this is really identification, evaluation, and what the plan is that's presented to students in terms of how they can be served if they choose to opt into it. But I don't know if there are any questions.
Ms. Rotelli.
Thank you. I just was wondering if we always needed a PPT for a gifted and talented student to be identified? That was the great insight that the policy committee discovered. We had no idea that we have been doing that forever, and I had no idea, it's, I'm going to let Dr. Zavijanzik describe the process. It's essentially a group PPT that, in general, parents aren't even at, but I'm, before I get myself into legal difficulties here, I'm going to let Dr. Zavijanzik describe it.
So what Ms. Maxine Cannelly stated is accurate. When we assess the students in third grade, a group PPT with school staff comes together and determines identification under the special education process. There is also times when individual parents may come forward at different grades than three or at any time throughout the year and say, we believe our, obviously, under child find, our student is gifted and or talented, and we would move forward with an individual PPT at that level in order to identify. So it is a group, it is only school staff, parents do not come, they're notified prior to, maybe this will help clarify, they're notified prior to the assessment period that the assessments are going to take place. Everybody is assessed in that grade level, so there's no, essentially, there's no consent form like you would see on an individual PPT. And then the school staff come together to look at the data and determine who has met the qualifications for gifted and talented under the district standards of gifted and talented.
Mind-blown, did not know that. My mind is, my brain is spinning, so probably have a ton of questions for you, but I'll save them, send them to you.
Just, thank you. Just don't wait too long before you send them. But the mind-blown, I would completely agree. We just kept looking at Dr. Zavijanzik, really? Yeah, we were not aware of that.
Just really, can I say something really quick? This, just wanted to point out that this is also in one that we need, that was mandated that we do and update, so sorry, Jen.
Thank you. And then finally, the third policy, which is something that the board had some awareness of, as I had sent out an email just trying to gauge your interest in this many, many months ago. I do want to thank, this is the policy for resident, non-resident school attendance in the Fairfield Public Schools, and importantly, for, we thought it was important for the board that you also received the administrative regs on this, because I anticipate that there would be a lot of questions, and many of which I think would be, which are addressed in the regs. So as you have questions, I would encourage you to also take a look at that. If you don't find the answer, again, please let me know. So I do want to thank the work of the Finance Committee for taking this up, because that was the piece of this policy that we had no interest in engaging in in terms of determining how, what kind of data do we use, what number do we feel comfortable settling on as a tuition number? But otherwise, you know, there, there were a few other tweaks to it, and I'm, again, just realizing now, this one definitely has a current policy, so I will have to ask that this gets sent out. Yeah. Yes, and so I missed that that was not part of the packet, so I will follow up tonight on that and see if it's possible to get that out tomorrow, because again, there is existing policy, and much of this is the same as that. But at this time, if there are any questions, I would be happy to address it if I can.
Mr. Peterson.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, this did come through Finance Committee, and then happy to have seen our fingerprints on it. I just want to make one clarification about the policy. Having seen a lot of parallel policies from other districts, our policy as proposed does not anticipate that the board will approve a tuition level every year. That was something that I noticed was common in other ones. This is something that we're going to doing strictly through a district formula in the regs.
And policy members, I hope you'll correct me if I'm wrong, our sense was because it is so prescriptive in the regs, the board is essentially approving the tuition amount by virtue of approving the budget. That was how we felt that, I mean, not that that can, if that's something that people were interested in changing, it's not that we can't, obviously, part of the budget discussion, I'm sure a question annually would end up being, what is this going to result in as a tuition number? I would anticipate that, but that's why we didn't feel the need to put that in here.
Sure, no, and actually, I completely agree with that approach. I just wanted to be clear that this is not a number specifically that will come before the board every year, as, as some districts appear to do. I also have a question for Superintendent Cummings on the regs, if you will. One of the things that we talked about in, in Finance Committee was trying to come up with a percentage of the kind of broader expense base to use as a target for, for the, for annual charge. The number that we, we kind of came to consensus on was 35%, but I noticed in the regs it's 30%. I was wondering why, what the discussion was around that.
I'm going to ask Ms. Laboria to come up.
That was my error. I did put the 30% in the regs, and it was 35%. You're correct, and can I still make that adjustment, Ms. Maxine Cannelly? Okay. Thank you for pointing that out.
Oh, no, I appreciate it. I'm glad that my memory was not incorrect.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this? Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
Well, I don't have any questions.
I was, Ms. Maxine, last. Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, I just would add, as I told Ms. Maxine Cannelly, we already have at least two staff members who are interested in doing this for next year. So while the first line of the regulations says January 15th, should this pass the board's approval at the 28th, I'd like to make this, you know, make staff aware. If we can even do a small number of people next year, it would be good to kind of work through the process with a relatively small number of people before we go, hopefully bigger.
And I just have one final plea regarding this policy in particular. I had told the policy committee that in the event that there was, that there were many board questions about this and that there were any requests for us to rework the language, that's going to determine the scheduling of our next and last policy committee of this school year. We are scheduled to meet on Monday, the 20th, and this will go back on our agenda if the board has areas that they're asking us to look at, to revisit or look at again. So I would sort of need to know, and again, it's, it's not necessarily that you would be coming to us saying that you have suggested language changes, but if there are areas of the policy that you find problematic, I am hoping that you could let me know that by Thursday, because then I'll know that I need to put this on our agenda again for the policy committee to revisit, try to do some work on so that we're not doing it here at the board table. On the other hand, if there, if no one comes to us with anything, which would be wonderful because it would mean our policy was beautiful, it's actually going to impact, because we'll be entirely moving our Monday policy meeting to the 28th. So it really will make a difference for us if there's anything that the board would ask us to revisit in this policy, if you could please let me know by Thursday.
Okay, moving on, adoption of policies. Adoption of policy 4118.112, prohibition of sex discrimination and sexual harassment in the workplace. Recommended motion, the Board of Education adopt policy 4118.112, prohibition of sex discrimination and sexual harassment in the workplace. Kind of a motion, Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mrs. Maxine Cannelly. Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
Sure, so there has been a change in the required process for investigate, for investigating any claims or investigating any issues. So these language changes came to us from Shipman, and we are asking for immediate action on this. So that, first, I'll just state that, then we do actually have- So, that, first, I'll just state that, then we do actually have an amendment that we're going to be making to it at the request of the Policy Committee and with Mr. Cummings' approval regarding to whom the claim, the issues are to be sent. Right now, in the policy, it indicates the Board's Title IX Coordinator is Dr. Zakiya Parish. We are required by state statute to, we are required to have in here not only either the name or the title and the contact information. So, that's where we have this, but in speaking with Mr. Cummings, he believes that we need to switch it to the HR Director, which is what we had, where we'd had it before when Ms. Deasy was here. So, but first, in general, for the policy, are there any questions? Because we are asking for this to be a voting item tonight. Any questions? Okay, then, I would like to make a motion to amend Policy 4118.112 on page three to say the, now, this I do, I apologize, Mrs. Gerber, as you're in the middle of taking notes. I do want to ask Mr. Cummings, should we simply refer to it by title?
Yes, I think for stall, future policy meeting agenda items, I think title alone would be great.
And then, is it fine to have only the phone number?
Yes.
Okay. And is that the correct number in there now?
That number is Dr. Parish's number.
That will get it quickly up here. So, again, before I put in the wording of the motion, could you, do you know the correct phone number?
Well, just to back up, we do have to have the email address and phone number. That is required.
One or the other contact information?
Both. No, it's both.
Oh, so we do, okay. So, we're going to have to put a title, a person in. Ms. Leffert would have the phone number, I know that.
Thank you.
The only alternative to that was something that I believe Ms. Laborius had suggested is creating a Title IX at Fairfield Public Schools, like a general email address that would be able to be redirected to whoever.
Which would be really nice for not having to bring this up. Not that I'm looking to have turnover in our HR, but, and so that would be easy to make?
IT says yes.
Would IT like to suggest the wording of the email address? That would not be a suggestion.
Title IX Coordinator?
I'm fine with just Title IX, keep it short. But is it Title 1X or is it Title IX? I apologize that we're doing this at the table. This is a little bit messy. I apologize for that. Okay. All right, so, so I would like to make this motion that on page three of Policy 4118.112, that we change at the bottom, the Board's Title IX Coordinator is the direct, is it Executive Director? The Executive Director of Human Resources. On the third line, the email address will be changed to Title 1X@FairfieldSchools.org. Phone number changed to 203-255-8462.
Can I have a second? Ms. Gernsy. Any further discussion on the amendment? Any public comment on the amendment? Seeing none, take to the Board for a vote on the amendment. All in favor? Motion carries eight zero. Back to the main motion as amended. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none? All in favor? Motion carries eight zero. Moving on, adoption of Policy 5145.4, prohibition of sex discrimination and sexual harassment. That the Board of Education adopt Policy 5145.4, prohibition of sex discrimination and sexual harassment. Kind of a motion, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, a second. Ms. Jacobson?
Same issue. Again, the same change that required the process to be altered in the previous policy applies here as well. And again, I'll be looking to make the exact same amendment to this policy for page C. But are there any questions? Again, we got this straight from Shipman. We did not, the only thing we changed were the numbers.
Okay, so, Ms. Max and Cannelly, you're making the motion for the amendment at this point?
First, I was just seeing if there were any questions.
I don't see any hands up.
Great, okay, I can always hope. So, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to amend page C. The Board's Title IX Coordinator is the Executive Director of Human Resources. Email being changed to Title 1X@FairfieldSchools.org. Phone number changed to 203-255-8462.
Mr. Peterson, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none? Any public comment on the amendment? Seeing none? Back to the Board for the vote on the amendment. All in favor? Motion carries eight zero. Back to the main motion as amended. Any further discussion or questions for the Policy Committee? Seeing none, back to the, oh, Mr. Peterson?
I'm sorry, just wanted to note very quickly, I did find one other place in the Policy Manual where Ms. Deasy's name was mentioned, if that's something you want to take care of in the future.
Ms. Hardeman has also alerted us to that. I would, if you could let me know, just so we have a comprehensive list, but I actually have a few, I think, that I have to, we have to take up.
Yeah, I didn't do an exhaustive search, but I found 4111.1 Equal Employment Opportunity. I know that they're all through the manual, so I just.
Any other questions? Okay, take it to the Board for a vote. All in favor? Policy as amended. Motion carries eight zero. Thank you, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, and to the Policy Committee for getting all these policies to us prior to the end of the school year. Okay, moving on. Options. Miss Laborius?
Courtney Laborius, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services. The sheet that you received in your packet is a summary of some options that are items that were, are not included in next year's budget, that were either cut from the budget or newly identified, and are options for us to consider utilizing our balances at year-end. As of Q3 and a half, I'll say, so our preliminary Q4, we presented to the Finance Committee, and I believe the Board also, at the meeting right after that, saying that we anticipated approximately $432,000 of surplus for year-end. That number is still being refined, so we're asking that you look at this list and give us feedback so that we have the Board's wishes before we go through the transfers, so putting it a little bit ahead of needing to do the transfers and not waiting until after at year-end. And so, that number with the anticipated surplus or balance at the year-end could be plus or minus, you know, 100 or 100,000 or 200,000. So, I'm asking to consider the priorities here, given that we're still finalizing the utility spending. They're behind in their billings for us, special ed, transportation billings. So, that said, the first category is our security items related to maintenance and security. There's intercom upgrades, building hardening, and window coverings totaling 376,000 in the current climate of safety. This was considered, I believe the Board had said that this should be considered as a priority or a potential for year-end spend. And the next category is athletic. It's part of what we normally see as a question we receive from a Board member as the athletic waterfall. The athletic waterfall is a multi-year look, so this would modify our waterfall, because there's some priorities that we would be able to afford, although in word uniforms, as identified in the detail there, as part of the spend down, that's about 40,000. And the third set of items that you see there are related to the math textbooks that we discussed earlier in the budget process. These are currently accounted for in the ARPESR grant and the ESR2 grant, both of the grants. And so, this would shift funding into the year-end spending and enable us to utilize the ARPESR differently. And Mr. Cummings can speak in detail about that as we get to that. And the next set of categories is technology, and these are items that were reduced from the budget this year. And we have Nancy Burns here as if there are questions about those categories.
Any questions from Board members? Mr. Peterson?
Hey, I just have a couple of quick questions about some of these items. The MS Suite for Para Professionals is, do we not normally use the Google Suite of products? I mean, would this be different than what our teaching staff is using, I guess is my question?
We actually have, can you hear me on this thing? Doesn't sound right. We actually use both in District. Most of the business activities of the District are done through the Microsoft product line. And then, there are many products that, in the Microsoft Suite, that many of the Para's use to create posters or work with the students with, in addition to the Google work that we do, which is Google Classroom, using the Google Docs and the Google Sheets. So, we actually support both product lines in the District.
All right, but there are things that the Para educators need this suite of products for that are not covered in the Google Suite.
That is correct.
All right. And then, just looking at, I mean, I noticed obviously the balance of the monitors and the dock stations cut from budget. The 100 laptops item, is that accelerating future plans?
Yes, and anticipating breakage when people come back in the fall.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Ms. Kelly?
I was just wondering if you can explain more about the rationale about the math textbooks, because I don't, like, we already had this discussion about using the grant money for that, and I'm confused why we would take that out now.
One of the considerations for this, as I looked at the ARPESR money in anticipation of the Board's hiring of a permanent Superintendent, was that with the Board, and this is really a question for the Board, the ARPESR has two years remaining on it. When you hire a new Superintendent, you have adopted a 22, 23 budget. They may identify costs or ideas that they would like to explore, and this would give them some room within the ARPESR to do that, because they'll come into our already funded budget. So, it's just a, it's a question of creating some space if the Board would decide to do that.
Ms. Jacobson?
Following up, have we, we haven't encumbered 100% of those funds, though, have we? We still have balances.
Correct. In the grant, yes, we went through a process, where identified the revisions that we presented to the Board, and then, some additional revisions, so we'll come back to the Board with that that we'll be putting in. That said, with the textbooks, we did about a week ago, issue a requisition against ARPESR. We would not draw the funds until the Board decided, so we'd still have the ability to, if the Board, it was the Board's will to charge that to the general fund, it's still allowable from an accounting perspective. But to answer your question, the, through the most recent revisions, I believe 95% to 99% of the ARPESR and ESR2 budget is spoken for, yeah.
Okay. And what we have spoken it for can be adjusted if necessary, right?
Yes, the state does allow.
So, you're just looking possibly if you wanted to, if we wanted to create more space, moving this back into the budget, operating budget.
Correct.
Chrissy, unless you have something else on that same question, I'm going to move on?
No, just that I feel like we had enough conversation about it during the budget process where I was comfortable using the grant money for it, so I would be uncomfortable undoing that right now. That's all. So, it's more a comment, more than a question.
Okay. Can I ask another question?
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead, Ms. Jacobson.
I asked the question on the uniforms, and so, based on what you said, I just want to make sure that I'm clear, that these would be an add to what's already on the waterfall, not a supplement?
No.
Or not a supplant?
Dr. Parish is going to, it's, yeah.
Because these are totally different than what's on our waterfall for 21, 22.
They would be in addition to what's on the waterfall.
In addition to.
Correct. So, what they're doing, per your request, is modifying the online version of the waterfall, which is the Google Doc that was shared with the Board.
Okay. That's just what I wanted to make sure, that we weren't getting off track with this track.
No, this would be in addition to.
Okay. We like in addition to. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Max and Cannelly?
Two things first. I have to admit, I was thrilled to see the uniforms on here, so thank you for whoever advocated for that. And I also thank Ms. Kelly for asking that question about the math textbook, because I had been thinking the same, but upon hearing Mr. Cummings' answer, I'm actually, I really liked that idea. I liked that idea of building inflexibility for somebody coming in. You know, obviously, we're hoping to get some ideas, and if they deviate and if they come with a price tag, great that as a Board, we could support that. So, I appreciate the question, and especially appreciate the answer. I did want to confirm, following up on Mr. Peterson's question regarding the laptops, are those the, sorry, I should have asked when you were up at the table. Are those the subject-specific laptops that we're talking about, or how are they different from the Chromebooks up above?
No, they are actually laptops that would be used for replacement plan.
Who's using these laptops?
It'll be a combination of students and, sorry, it's late, and teachers.
Okay, and they're, so I guess when I'm saying subject-specific, I remember we were, I think we were talking about art classes and maybe some of the CAD classes that.
Well, no, we actually bought some laptops for the high school students. We have not utilized all of those. We didn't have enough students identified who were willing to accept them. So, we still have plenty of those units. What we're anticipating is some of the units that those children who did take them home may be damaged, and we may need to replace them. We also had those sorts of things happen over the summer with staff members who have an issue that, you know, an accident, that kind of thing. And as part of our replacement plan overall, we're trying to strive, as I think I mentioned at the budget hearings, to get everybody down to one mobile device as opposed to a desktop and a mobile device, because of the nature of the world at this point, and this will allow us to accelerate that.
Okay, and, but you did raise something, if you can refresh my memory, what is, if students don't buy the insurance policy, what is supposed to be addressing these, this damaged equipment? Because obviously, we don't just keep replacing everything.
No, we actually charge them a fee. So, depending on what's wrong with the device, if the device is fully fails, you know, gets dunked in a lake or something, to that effect, you know, oops, I took it on the boat with me, then the parents would be held accountable for a full replacement cost of the device. But if a parent had insurance on the device and had selected to do that, then we would carry that burden of the replacement cost.
So, the finances will be reimbursed essentially to the District, but by purchasing the laptops, we're not experiencing the lag time of getting the replacements? Is that the idea behind this?
Essentially, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jacobson?
While you're up here, on the backside, balance of monitors cut from budget, balance of dock stations cut from budget. We didn't cut monitors or docking stations from the budget.
Mr. Cummings did.
You mean before it got to us? Thank you. So, for anyone looking at this and wondering, what do you mean? All right, so, cut prior to reaching us.
Correct.
Is those items. Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Kelly?
I just don't have the number in front of me. This 522-746 on the math textbooks, was that the whole amount that we were taking from the ESR grant?
The original amount was higher, actually, because if you look at the ESR2 and ARPESR combined together, 28,800, I believe, was for PD associated with the rollout, and then, the balance was five and change. We got a better pricing. Number one, there were lower students, and then, lower number of students, and number two, it was for just the electronic licenses, not the hard textbooks as well. So, this is a lower amount, and the difference is, I think, about $15,000 or so between what was originally planned for and what this cost now represents on the sheet.
Okay, and then, the next question is just more process, because this is my first time going through this. Obviously, everything on this sheet adds up to much more than the surplus that we're talking about. So, what, I don't know what the next, like, what happens next?
At our next meeting, we have to make budget adjustments to basically balance our budget at the end of the at the end of the year. Correct? Is that the short of it? Ms. Laborius, anything?
Yes. And I was also, if the Chair will allow, one of our challenges is that we're in the middle of June. And, you know, in order for us to record an expense appropriately, the gooder service has to be received before June 30th, and our next Board meeting is June 28th. So, one of the hopes was that some of the items that the Board would be amenable to utilizing the balance. There could be a conversation tonight so we could get some direction and have that set up and ready to go with some decision parameters around that.
Any other questions right now? Sorry. With this 400... Are we using $432,000 as our bogey? Is that the target?
$432 is likely to be where we'll be. If... And I would just, on the 28th meeting, if we were to find in two weeks, as we refine the final bills, that our surplus is another additional, for example, $100,000, we could have that conversation on the 28th, what the Board would like to do.
Ms. Kelly?
And pardon my ignorance, but there is also always the option of giving it back. That is an option. I'm just...
That's correct.
Thank you. That is. Ms. Burns, I have to... I need you back up here. I have a question for you.
Just a question about the projector for Roger Liddell Middle School and Tomlinson. Can you just give a little more color on what these projectors are used for?
Yes, for the auditoriums. Fairfield Woods Middle School has a larger projector, as do the two high schools, in the auditoriums that are used for everything from PD for teachers to assemblies for students to outside organizations. You know, you've all been to many of those activities. I think you can understand what I'm talking about. We do not have mounted projectors in those two schools. So, they're sort of at a disadvantage to Fairfield Woods. And I believe that was installed as part of their renovation project. One of those renovations, don't hold me to which one, because I don't know. And they had both asked for that in the budget. I believe Mr. Cummings also cut that, because we couldn't... You know, we just can't do everything we want to do. So, when we had this opportunity, in having recently talked again to Mr. Formato about how it's affecting his ability to do things at Tomlinson, I thought I'd bring it forward again.
Do you foresee all of these items being, well, presented to the next superintendent in terms of an ask for next budget?
Yes.
Assuming the answer was yes. In terms of... I would... I may follow up with just priority in terms of some of the items on this list for the technology piece of it. To answer Ms. Laborius's question, right now, when I'm looking at this list, I'm looking at crossing off those maintenance, the intercom upgrades, right off the list right now. I think that that's something that's been on the maintenance list as a priority one or two, or priority two. The uniforms, I'd be interested in moving those forward this year. Sorry. I'm sorry. Excuse... I don't mean crossing off. Crossing it off the maintenance list, just getting it done, getting it done. In terms of things that I'm interested in possibly moving forward, if we have funding available, that I would be amenable to reallocating that funding. I'd be looking at the intercoms, just off of the intercom and the uniforms. The window coverings. May have more questions on the building hardening, but those maintenance and security line items are a priority for me, as well as the uniforms. I would also be interested in moving the math textbooks out of the grant for the reasons Mr. Cummings... And I'm going over what we have available in terms of funding potentially, just to free up money in the grant. Ideally, textbooks should be carried in the operating budget, so I'd like to bring it back there if we can, just to have that money in the grant. We use that money this past year to help... What? I said I might be over. I'm... Maybe not all of the math textbooks. Some of the math textbooks. I'm just sharing my thoughts. I'm asking, you know, as a starting point for you, maybe to share some of yours as well, right now, that I... Not the whole $500,000, but maybe some of those math textbooks, bring them back into the operating budget to free up some money in the grant, both for the next superintendent. You know, this past year, we used it to help mitigate the budget increase, you know, just for ourselves. We potentially could have that option again for next year. And you never know, you know, what needs might be coming available, what we might have next year in terms of COVID. We seem to be out of it, but just some of the challenges that we've seen in terms of staffing and substitute teachers, having a little bit of additional money in the grant, I think, could be advantageous.
And I did want to reiterate, these are one-time costs, so they wouldn't have an ongoing. And then also that the technology, which I didn't mention earlier, are prioritized in priority order as they're presented. So, number one, which would be the server, because the other ones crossed off is the first priority that Nancy identified... Mrs. Burns identified.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions? Any other feedback for where other Board members are with Ms. Fratelli?
Yeah. Since we're giving our thoughts, I'll just say that I agree with Mrs. Kelly about the math textbooks. I think they should stay in the grant.
Okay. Any other thoughts about areas that you would be amenable to moving forward?
You know, I would tend to go with maintenance and security, probably as a priority, although all of the items on the list are compelling. But that's where I'd probably go first.
Thank you. Anyone else want to give thoughts? Mrs. Gerber?
I would say maintenance, security, and the athletic.
Anyone else? All right. As new information is shared, we get a firmer idea of what the number will be. We will share that with the Board, and I would just ask the Board to think about that and share what your priorities are for those that have not shared it. Mrs. Kurnsy?
When do we think we're receiving that information, the final numbers?
On the June 28th meeting. But I can send an update in a Friday packet, if that's helpful, as a preliminary. You know, just we do... We're monitoring it on a daily basis and refining daily. So, I can send it out in a Friday packet, if that's okay with the Chair.
That would be helpful to know if it's, you know, if it's $100,000 plus or minus, that's significant. And I think it would be helpful for the Board to know.
I'm sorry. I just thought of a question.
Yep.
On the uniforms or just on any of these items, again, I'm going to go back to the current issue with purchasing. If we approve this $21,000, $22,000 on the 28th of June, are these literally like in a system on... Whatever we go with, like go button through purchasing authority? Or is there wiggle room in order to get this in? Or how is that going to work, since it's going to be kind of late?
It would be ideal to order the items sooner than later, so within the next week and not wait for the 28th, if that's possible. It's allowable, but really, the gooder service should be received before the 30th, and that wouldn't happen if we were ordering the items on the 28th. The town has allowed us to do that in the past, especially given the supply chain issues and, you know, challenges that we've seen. That said, Mrs. Burns and Mr. Papa George all have their purchase orders ready to go. They have their quotes in place, so everything's ready to go to put in the orders as soon as possible. If we could get agreement, because it sounds like there is consensus, that we could at least do the maintenance and security items, that would be helpful to us. And then we can come back and ask the Board advice via providing an update in the Friday packet and just having everything ready to go for that 28th meeting.
So, we kind of need to decide.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah. So, I just... I guess I'm a little concerned, just because... And I get that a lot of it is just the timing of the meeting and how close it is. And really, we're talking about the 29th, because nothing's going to be happening on the 28th. We never seem to be able to wrap things up quickly. So, I don't know. I guess I just... I'm concerned that... I guess my question is, with this list, what do we absolutely know we'll be able to get? Because, I mean, obviously, I mentioned the uniforms. I think it's important. But if, for some reason, we can't get that, and all of a sudden, we're just going to be left not being able to get them, and there's something else we could have gotten, I guess. So, I mean, of this list, what do we know we could get if we vote on the 28th?
We know we could do the transfer for the textbooks. That order's already been placed. We know that we could order the intercoms, window coverings, and the materials related to the building hardening. If we were to order those items and we got them in on, let's say, July 8th, you know, that's allowable and acceptable, because there are supply chain delays, and we can say we, you know, reasonably ordered them in June. So, the uniforms, we do have quotes. If we were able to order those this week, we would be able to get those in time, and that would be wonderful as well.
Right. But I don't think we can order them, because the Board has to vote, and we're not voting tonight. So, I guess my... I'm a little confused. Like, is the uniforms... Are the uniforms moot?
So, not clear that it does require a vote for the approval of the items. The policy says that the Board votes on the transfers. Many of these wouldn't require transfers, because the surplus is within the major category. More, we're bringing it to your attention in the vein of it's some... These are items that weren't part of the initial budget plan, but we want the Board to be aware and to give feedback, because in the budget plan, we do outline line-by-line detail items. These are different than the original items. However, policy doesn't require that the Board vote unless it would require a budget transfer. Many of these items do not require a budget transfer, if that makes sense.
We're more or less approving the money and a general idea of how we want you to spend that.
That's correct.
Based on this list.
That's correct.
Because all of these are already existing. It's just we got to kind of pick.
That's correct. And I didn't... We also were discussing, we didn't want there to be any surprises, given the lots of discussions this year about year-end surplus, the budget needs for next year. So, we want to be very transparent about our thought processes as we close the fiscal year, in a time where we did have that surplus related to the transportation and the staffing challenges that we've already discussed.
So, this funding really could be expended without Board input, is really what you're... But you're in to be transparent, getting Board feedback right now.
Correct.
So, Ms. Maxenelli?
That's all I just wanted to say, very emphatically and explicitly. Thank you for doing it in a process like this. I don't think anyone on here, and which I obviously think you know, would have appreciated this just being done, even if this is a formality to a degree of what you're not required to do. I appreciate this process and would hope this is how it would always be done.
Ms. Jacobson?
I'll be more clear, just because I think it's helpful that we tell you. I would put my hat in with the security projects as well and the uniforms. The math textbooks, I feel like they have a home. These other things don't have a home at this point, and are obvious needs. So, I would put them there, and knowing that we can always adjust the grants as we proceed with them, and they're adjustable as the needs may arise. So, that's where I would put my two cents right now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Kurnsy?
Sorry. I didn't realize that this was like my chance. So... So, coincidentally, this is sort of an order of priority for me, starting at the top with maintenance, security, and athletic needs. And I would support some math textbooks if we could squeeze them in. But actually, this order works for me.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
Since we're going around, and I didn't say it before, pretty much this maintenance, security, and athletic. I'm happy with the math textbooks being remaining in the grant.
Ms. Maxenelli? Any other thoughts?
No. Again, I guess I'm only deviating from some people with the math textbooks. I love the idea of opening up grant money for a new superintendent. But otherwise, I wasn't speaking, because I was agreeing with everybody else. Maintenance, security, athletics, thumbs up.
All right. So, I think that guidance right now, maintenance and security, top priority, as stated on this, the athletic uniforms, and moving forward with that. It sounds like the majority of the Board, I think, comfortable the math textbooks staying in the grant. I guess there could be follow-up in terms of funding available, if you want to take some of them out at some point. Also, as stated, money could just go back to the town at the... Which I know that there was a discussion of that happening as well, especially in light of the money that we receive for the scoreboard. So, something else just to keep in mind for this year. Mr. Cummings?
Thank you. I just want to make sure that... I'm going to restate for everybody, just to make sure that we're on the right page, same page. So, what I'm hearing from the Board is the green light on the first two items, the maintenance and security, and the athletic uniforms. We can then come back to you with an update on what the projected surplus may be in a Friday packet, and then on the 28th. Consider that against the other remaining items on the list, including the possibility of returning some funding to the town. Is that correct?
That is correct. Ms. Fratelli?
I'm sorry. I wasn't writing down numbers when you were saying it. But we were using $432 as the target. But didn't you say that could go plus or minus $100 to potentially $200?
Yes, correct.
Lower or higher?
Plus or minus. I apologize. It's just such a big year-end with a lot of moving parts, so, you know...
So, I'm just confused when we say that, and we're giving priorities, and we do maintenance and security, and then athletic uniforms, we're already... We're already over $4. $4, $6. So, that's, you know, if we're, you know, plus or minus $1,000 to $200,000, then how does that work?
So, I was looking for approximately like $600,000, what you'd like to do. I think I got up to $400. I'll send around and update this Friday in the Friday packet. And then we'll do... Execute those items that you identified, and then, I guess, discuss that on the 28th.
If we wanted to give more to $600, is that what you're looking for? I mean, obviously, we get the minus $200, you know, to $200. But I don't think I realized you wanted us to give you numbers up to $600.
It would be helpful. Yeah.
I thought we were only going to like the $432. So, yeah. Six... I mean, $632, sorry. All right.
So...
Ms. Fratelli, is there any chance we can do this by email?
Yeah.
Can we send ideas in?
Yeah. I'm just...
And I could share a spreadsheet if that's... If people are amenable, much like you do with the Q and A.
Yeah. I mean, I think that as, you know, the range of, you know, anywhere from, you know, 2 to 6 is a large range. So, I think that for now, you do have guidance in terms of the Board's priority, in terms of the maintenance, security, and the athletic uniforms. I think that we're going to need just an update on where we are in terms of, you know, math textbooks, none, some, returning funding to the town, and looking at this technology list, which I myself have some questions on, and I think that follow-up by email is a very good suggestion. Thank you, Mrs. Maxenelli. Thank you, Ms. Laborius.
Wait.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Fratelli. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm misunderstanding. But if we're at 416, and we're going from 2 to 6, and we end up at the 2 mark, then should we really be ordering these things now? Or waiting until after we know the final number?
Well, Ms. Laborius, I'm assuming that you are going to be monitoring this and not be placing any orders until you have a stronger idea of where we are landing moving over the next week to two weeks.
Correct. Yeah, one example, yeah. One item that, so for example, we've typically booked the utilities expense in, for the June payment in next year's budget. This year, we're putting the June payment in this year's budget and we're, they're behind in their billings for us. So, for that reason, within the next week, I expect to, I will have the utility bills for May and I can do a better projection for June. We'll be setting up an accrual for that June period. We don't have to have the bill, it's just when the service is received. So, for that reason, and it's a big swing only because we were under contract in January. We've only had a few months of experience without the contract. And then in addition, you know, the rates for electric have just widely fluctuated and so we just need to see those bills.
All right, I just wanted to put it out there because if, if we're closer to 6 and not 2, then I would be very interested in what we could return to the town.
So, we will continue to get updates and as we get more information in the next week or so and if need be, if we have to hop on a WebEx just to clarify. I don't know, if your plans are, I'm not trying to add a meeting, but you know, want to make sure that you're getting clear guidance from us. So, I appreciate that you're putting forward this list and the update in the Friday packet.
Thank you.
And as always, any follow-up questions? Ms. Kelly?
Just because it's in the packet, is this part of a separate presentation? Or you had the other schedule that you included in here?
Yes, that's part of the fundraising presentation. That's, yeah, separate.
Okay, moving on, first reading of school nutrition and meal pricing. Ms. Laborius, the floor is still yours.
Okay, so what you have before you is a proposal to increase the meal pricing for elementary, middle, high school and for the deluxe meals from our current price of 285, 310, 315, and 405 to 310, 335, 340, and 425. We have done a comparison to the Derg B average prices and this would keep us below those average prices as well as Southern Fairfield County average price, with the only exception being the elementary school. But that's a, the averages are an understated number because we were only able to get updated pricing for next year for about five of the schools that you see here. The rest, we just had to carry forward last year's number. So, we're still well below the average for those if we were to increase the meal prices. And I have more here to speak to any specific questions we have on the pricing.
Ms. Kelly?
I was just wondering what the catalyst for this is? Just because we're going two years now, I think, with free lunches and now to
Yeah.
Add it back in and increase it with inflation where it is. I just think this is going to be a little bit of a.
I appreciate your concern. However, we have not raised our prices in five years. So, the families have participated at the free level now for two years. The Department of Agriculture has decided to go back to free, reduce, and paid. So, perhaps this is a better time to introduce it to families because they have not had a price increase in five years.
Right, but the price of everything else is increasing. So, I was just wondering if the catalyst was, are we losing money? Are we, is it, is there, I just wanted to know, like, you looked at numbers, you didn't like, not you personally, but everyone looked at numbers, we didn't like them and decided we needed to, like, the catalyst, I just was wondering.
Yeah, so in addition to looking at the big, the group that you have here and what the standard is for Derg, the similar Derg B and then also to our county, we also looked at pre-pandemic, you know, operating statements and profit and loss statements. And so, you know, we do have a bit of a concern because we've been in this, the free, you know, world for two years and we've done really, really well. We do have a concern that if we don't raise our prices to market levels when we ran the numbers, that we could be in a position again where we'd be close, you know, to not cutting a profit and close to being in the red. So, it's also a business decision as well.
Sorry, do you mind if I keep? What numbers did we use when we put the budget together?
What budget? You mean the budget for the upcoming year? So, when we take this year's budget and roll it forward, the revenues offset the budget. So, we looked at it with both the existing meal pricing and then the proposed meal pricing with certain assumptions about the uptake, which is a little bit hard to predict because we've been in free for two years. So, our assumption was back to pre-pandemic uptake and that proved that we did need to raise the prices if we assume that we were at the same level of participation as we were pre-pandemic.
So, the assumptions in the budget were at the higher numbers or at the lower?
We tested it out in both the higher and lower numbers and we believe that what we're putting forward is what we would need to have a sustainable program for next year. We have a budget that's based on the number of staff that we have to staff, meals that we need to purchase, et cetera. So, in order to sustain our current operating budget as it is, we would need to raise the prices to what we're proposing.
Right, I guess, and I don't want to get too into the weeds, but I would assume that putting together a budget for our food services or whatever it was, that one of the fundamentals would have been what we're charging for meals. Is that not how it's, again, getting too into the weeds, but?
Yeah, we don't develop the budget in the same way that we do the operating budget for the food service. We have staffing that meets all the requirements for what we need to have, cafeteria staff, supervisors, nutritionists, our cooks, et cetera. The meals are a cost that's standard that we've seen or that could be going up next year as well because.
Fortunately, yeah, as you know, food costs have gone. Fuel cost, and so therefore, that's another factor. And in addition, the minimum wage, that any new hires in the district, are started at minimum wage, but that is going up July 1st. But frankly, we may, as a district, may have to look to increase because we've had a terrible labor shortage this school year and we may, factoring in that we may have to increase the hourly rate of our staff in the cafeterias.
Right, so was that also factored into the budget or was not factored?
Correct, yes. We looked at, the minimum wage goes up on January 1st to $15. On July 4th, no, isn't it stepped in on, there's partial July 1 and then Jan. 1 is the second increase? Yeah, so starting our fiscal year, we accounted for half of a year at the $15 rate. And, yeah, so that, to answer your question, yes, that was factored into the budget as well as a projection about increased supply, costs for the food commodities. So, this is what we arrived at as a recommendation based on that information.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Laborius. Moving on to approval of minutes. The Board of Education approved the May 25, 2022 special meeting minutes. Ms. Jacobson, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. Any discussion? Seeing none, to the board for a vote. All in favor? Motion carries 8-0. Oh, I'm sorry. That's what I get for my quick vote. I was, you know, 7:01. Now, I'll never do it. See, I was doing it. This is what, I missed it. 7:01, thank you. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Cummings?
All right, good evening again. We have several items on the superintendent's report. I'm going to begin with a conversation about grade 4 advanced math students. We were asked during budget deliberations as we looked at ending the 4th grade Math Academy that's currently housed at Holland Hill, what options might exist for those students? So, with Dr. Savic Chancik and Mr. Wakeman, we explored several possibilities. Mr. Wakeman went through the process of identifying students as he does each spring. This year, in the past, the board is aware, we've identified around 40 students over the past two or three years. This year, the only number of students that was identified under the criteria was eight. Eight total students, six boys, two girls, eight students representing six of the elementary schools in Fairfield. So, we looked at what might be the best possible way to address those students' needs as the board had asked us to do. We're putting forth the idea that the best plan going forward for these students, at least for the next year, would be to supplement their summer learning with intervention, with both material and online support from one of our certified teachers. And then while they're placed in elementary school 4th grade classrooms next year, align the 4th and 5th grade math schedules so that those students could take math with 5th grade students in their home schools. Now, again, this would be, this would be an option that parents could choose to do or not do as the current Math Academy functions. And that would be the way that they would accelerate through 5th grade into 5th, in 4th grade, get the 5th grade math curriculum. The issue that that creates is that, as it states in the memo to you, what we have to do to support them in the following year. They, taking 6th grade math with 5th grade teachers is not going to be a usable solution, given the interventions that would be required and the teacher, the needs for the 5th grade teachers to address the needs of the existing 5th grade students. So, as we look forward, whether we were to, as the Gift and Intelligen Program looks for revision, would it be scooped up with that? Would we have to supplement MST hours? Could we do an online version of instruction for these students? Those are options that we'd have to, we'd have to consider. So, we can address the immediate issue of these students into next year, but other, the solution beyond that is going to require both a consideration of what is best educational planning for these students as well as potential budget implications for those students. So, with that said, if there's any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Cummings on this? Ms. Jacobson?
Thank you for the summary on this. I think, you know, as you reach out to parents, if we're going to move forward with this idea, don't we think that they would kind of want to know what would be happening in 5th grade in order to make a decision about 4th grade? I think it would be somewhat difficult to say, yeah, I'm going to take a gamble on that and not know what I'm getting for the following year. But how soon do you think we would have to grapple with what we're going to be doing? Is this literally going to have to wait till the whole next budget season to know that? Because, I mean, I'm looking for a timeline on decision for the 6th grade piece.
No, and I understand the concern. I think that, given where we are with solutions, I think that there will be a budget, some form or another of a budget consideration for the board in adopting the 23, 24 budget.
But we would have to do at that point because.
If you were to decide to pursue this option, yes.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
I guess the only thing I don't like about any of this is the "we can address" or "if." To me, this is an absolute, we've been promising that we would do something for these students when we pulled the Math Academy away as even an option before we knew numbers. So, if, and this was one of the ideas that had been, we had talked about quite some time ago and that I had spoken with Mr. Cummings about. So, I would hope that we would move ahead with, full speed ahead with this, contacting, and I would hope not by email but by phone call because time is short, ascertain who is interested in it so that staff can be charged with making that summer packet. I love the fact that you're talking about having also an online contact once a week. I think that's fabulous. So, great to hear that. And no one should have expected that we were going to see the Math Academy go away and not have some kind of budget, to Mrs. Jacobson's point, not have some kind of budget impact to then actually serve these students. And if that ends up being through MST, if that ends up being through Gift, however we do that, I personally am, you know, emphatically telling you, I hope we go ahead with this now. I hope staff moves on this. And I embrace the fact that I, that we as a board, I would be voting in support of whatever budget impact this is that we thoughtfully craft and have presented to us as we think this is the best way moving forward. So, I do that without hesitation because we know these are students who are being underserved right now and especially if we do nothing. And I do agree that at this point in time, this is the best plan to serve these students that's the least disruptive, so I appreciate that. And then just one passing comment of what a testament to the learning loss that these students have experienced. These are not slower students naturally, that this is just outright material they were not able to get to, you know, and I'm not faulting the previous teachers. But talk about, you know, again, a rather compelling statistic. So, for what it's worth, I'm an enthusiastic, let's get moving on this. Let's come up with the staff plans to support these students. Obviously, first, it starts with, are you interested in making this move? And we need to find that out quickly.
And I hear Ms. Jacobson's, you know, the question, well, what comes next? And I think that that could be somewhat difficult for us to answer now depending on how many students. You know, if only one student takes advantage of it, what?
But is it, is it fair to say they will be, they will access the grade 6 curriculum if we're not positive exactly what it looks like? But it's not like we're going to let you then tread water for a year. You will access grade 6 curriculum.
I don't, I don't want to, I'm just trying to think of the right way to say this. The, this is, we can make this adjustment right now, a year, a year adjustment for the grade 4 students and the grade 5. The question really for the board from a voting perspective is ultimately a budget one, right, in the 23, 24 budget. But you're absolutely right. If we're going to pursue this, you know, educationally, we cannot leave those students to repeat 5th grade. So, we're going to have to, there's going to be some, some response. And my, the point, one of the points of this memo to you and this discussion tonight is to point out that any of those responses, no matter how we look at it, we project some type of funding implication for that. Whether it's, what it quantifies as yet, I'm not sure. You know, that would depend on how many of the eight students actually choose this path, right? But, so I only, that's why we bring it forward to you tonight because it's a, it's a long-term implication, well, a year-out implication for the board.
So, essentially, staff is ready to move forward with this plan. What is needed from the board tonight is if there is strong pushback against the idea of having any budget impact, it needs to be said now. Am I correct?
That is, that would be the direction we would need, yes. Because there is that, the commitment that you're making to the next budget.
Ms. Guernsey?
So, maybe this throws a wrinkle in it, in the plan, but I just, I'm going back to sort of the numbers here. You know, two girls, we were at that the first year of the program. We said that would never happen again. So, while I'm fully in support of meeting the needs of these eight students, should they decide that's what they, the path they want to take, I'm really concerned about all the other kids that weren't captured here that have the potential to be in this program, but how are we meeting their needs? And thinking about that at the same time as we're having this conversation is important to me.
Ms. Kelly?
I guess fundamentally, I don't love this approach. Forget that we can't figure out what to do with them, I don't mean them, students in 5th grade. But I feel like the problem I have with this is that it's boiling down to exactly what I always felt like the Math Academy was as far as being a race to the same place. So, you know, the issue was, oh, going from 5th grade to 7th grade math and we were skipping 6th grade math. Well, now we're skipping 4th grade math. Now, we're taking the 3rd graders and putting them into 5th grade math. So, we've just pushed it down two years and it just feels like a race to the same exact place. And I just don't think we're solving any problems here. And I just, I, regardless of potential budget issues that it could come with in the second year or two years from now, I can't support this because I just don't, I don't support it, so, regardless of budget impact.
Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
Just through the chair to Ms. Kelly. I hear your point, but given that this comes with a entire summer support program which essentially represents 4th grade math, I guess I don't see your point. I don't see how this is the same thing as what you were saying because they are not going from 3rd to 5th grade. 4th grade is essentially being condensed to the summer where they're not only getting a packet, but they're also getting access to math support. a packet, but they're also getting access to math support from a teacher to prepare them for the jump. I, I guess I'm missing your point.
Maybe I don't understand enough about what that support, the summer support will be, which I fully admit that I do not, but I still feel like it is a, a race to the same exact place. You're either skipping it now or you're skipping it then and in the form of a math packet or in the form of whatever this summer program would look like. I feel like the current process for kids to, to jump and, and I don't, I can't speak to it directly, from fifth grade into seventh grade math, maybe Mr. Cummings, could you explain what that process looks like?
Um, when they...
Uh, from a summer perspective. So you identify that you can go into seventh grade math and sixth grade. I know you get a special math packet, you get a special...
Right, and there's a, you essentially take an assessment which determines your readiness to, to move essentially up from the, the traditional grade six math into the pre-algebra class.
No, but I'm saying, once you've been identified and is saying, okay, now we're doing this, you're going to go into seventh grade math, they get a different math packet than the regular...
That prepares them for that.
Exactly. So now, if we're supplementing that with an additional course, is that what, is that what the suggestion is here? So would we be doing something different for these third graders that we would be doing for the fifth graders currently? Is that the proposal?
That's, that's what would essentially have to happen since Math Academy doesn't exist as a classroom now, the fourth grade Math Academy.
Ms. Jacobson.
Hi, thank you. Um, just, my sentiment is, is that for those who are opposed to the Math Academy, a lot of the mantra or talking point was, we need to meet students' needs in their home schools, right? Because there's a barrier to getting on the bus and some people didn't want to go, whatever, so we need to bring this home. So here's the plan at home. Now we're not into the plan at home. So I'm just curious, if this isn't the plan at home, what is the plan at home to meet these students' needs? Because that's what all we heard for people who were against Math Academy was, we need to meet their students' needs in their home school. So what is that if it's not this? Is my question through you to someone who may be questioning this idea because I haven't heard another one. Thank you.
Ms. Kelly followed by Ms. Rotelli.
The plan in my mind was always differentiating in your home schools. It is, but without a, we can't just say it's a plan without having a plan in year two. That's not a plan.
Differentiation in the classroom is what you meant?
Yes.
So condense it to doing...
Well, no, it doesn't have to be in the classroom. It doesn't have to be. If there was enough kids that, why can't we do it like we do in the middle schools? Where we, we, we level in, there's advanced math, there's, you know, TPA, there's sixth grade math, there's seventh grade math. Why can't we differentiate in the home schools? And if there's only, I mean, if there's not enough kids, maybe it would give, afford us the opportunity to identify more kids because you can't have a class of just, if we only identified eight kids, we can't have a class of one advanced kid at Mill Hill, made that up. But it would open the, it would open the door to more kids and to be able to differentiate by doing it in the home school. And so you, it's like middle school. Great, it's math time, you're going to go to this classroom, you're going to go to this classroom. Now, obviously depends on how many sections you have and your teachers, but like, that to me would be a more comprehensive plan than saying, hey, we're going to take these guys, put them in summer camp or summer school, and then we're going to put them in fifth grade math and then we'll worry about the rest later. Like, that's not a plan, sorry.
So the issue I think with the differentiation piece was condensing that three years into two. Is that my understanding that that's something that we are not thinking is possible to do?
Um...
Sixth grade math and fifth grade.
You basically have to use the summer now. But, you know, if you think about what fourth and fifth grade Math Academy has done, is take, essentially a year and a half of math, right, into a year. Now you're taking a year, putting it into one summer, and then you're doing five and, five and, those, I'm sorry, those fourth grade students in fi, in grade five, and then staying in elementary, how do you accommodate them for the grade six program in what would be their fifth grade year? So it's, I'm not, I'm not making any sense. But essentially, you're, you're doing fourth grade in the summer now, not as part of the fourth grade year.
Ms. Rotelli. So my problem with this proposal is that it's not complete. And I'm uncomfortable supporting something that's, that we have no idea what is going to happen in the next year and, and we just have to commit to a budget number we don't know or a plan we don't know. So to me, this is just not acceptable for that reason. And I don't see any reason, and I've always, I always maintain this, I don't see any reason why these eight students can't be accommodated in their home schools by the staff. And I would assume that with all the knowledge that our Math Academy teachers have gained over the last few years, that we certainly could put something in place for those students to achieve what they need and be differentiated to in their classroom. And just to repeat myself, always, I believe that is possible. I don't believe that these children are above the differentiation and they're different from anyone else who needs that differentiation in the classroom and that's the way they get it.
Mrs. Maxicanelli.
Um, I would counter that by saying, you cannot differentiate for these students. We know we can't differentiate for these students because we are in fact elevating them to an entirely different grade and they are so capable, which we know based on their scores and based on previous experience, they're going to do an entire grade in the summer. And then they're not being differentiated for, they are actually accelerating into a completely different curriculum. That's not what differentiation does. Differentiation meets you where you are, it can go to a greater degree of rigor, it can have something that's more complex in the curriculum that you're currently accessing, which is what hopefully some of them are doing in the third grade. But to just move into regular fourth grade and expect that that fourth grade teacher is going to do two independent curricula because these eight students are ready for that, and we're instead going to say, you're suggesting, I'll just give them harder worksheets or just, I'm not sure what you think is happening in that classroom, but the whole point is differentiation doesn't begin to meet the learning needs of these students. And I know, I understand your point, Mrs. Rotelli, that that is a phrase that's like nails on a chalkboard because you believe other students are told that that can happen. And I can't speak to all students, but these are students that we know and have identified as being ready essentially to skip a grade. The fourth grade teachers can't be asked to do that. What I would have been very interested, if the numbers had been significantly bigger, what could the MST person have done at the elementary school for them and not in the fifth grade? What could have been that support? But with such small numbers, the budget for that doesn't make sense. It makes sense to give them the summer acceleration and then meet their needs with that fifth grade curriculum. But the alternative of doing nothing, I don't understand anyone standing in support of. You got rid of the Math Academy. It's gone. You wanted it in the home school, it is. We're meeting the needs next year with zero budget impact. Why not support that? Knowing that there will be some budget impact of some FTE support for these eight students, crafting a more, a more comprehensive plan, hopefully for greater numbers, as this learning loss gets caught up and our students get back on track. But to just say that we're going to do nothing for them, I, I said it all throughout budget time and it's just, I'm absolutely flabbergasted right now.
Just, just want to say, by the way, just want to say that that's not what I said. And I think I made it clear that I wouldn't, I'm not saying these kids wouldn't be supported, quite the opposite. I will agree to disagree with you respectfully again. And just add that aside from all of that, this plan is incomplete.
Thank you, Ms. Rotelli. Ms. Kelly, get your hand up.
No, I was just going to say, speak to the incomplete part. I mean, even if I did agree with this and I, and there is a budgetary issue two years from now, what if that, what if the only solution we can come up with is that we don't have the resources in the elementary school and every single elementary school is going to need an Algebra I teacher in there? Or, you know, yeah, basically TPA teacher in each, we're going to hire 11 FTE or eight FTE if there, if it's in eight of the elementary schools? Like, that is just an irresponsible leap of faith to be, in my opinion.
I don't think that that would necessarily be, and I, I hear about the plan being incomplete. I think that this has been, since its inception, the Math Academy has approved some challenges. Right now with eight students, we wouldn't even be running the fourth grade class because we wouldn't have met the class size guidelines for even having. So either way, we would have been, we would have identified students and be having this discussion. And I think it's difficult to, I mean, for me, I find it difficult to say what we're going to do for these students when they're done with fifth grade. We don't know how many are going to even want to take this on. We don't know if they're going to be successful. We assume that they're just going to be successful in fifth grade. And the numbers, I think, could drive what the programming looks like for these students when they're in fifth grade. I mean, I'm at the, I'm at the point right now where reaching out to these parents and gauging their interest, I mean, taking on summer work and knowing that there's still uncertainty on what, what's going to come next as we move forward with developing a plan for them, what the Gifted and Talented program will look at the elementary schools. I would personally like to see the supports there as, as opposed to these students being not in a full class, someone on their own, just being accelerated. I'm not really sure that that's an ideal learning environment. But I, I hear Mrs. Maxicanelli's concerns about we have identifying them and wanting to, to provide an option for them. But I'm concerned about the budget impact and I, and I'm, I'm not at the position right now that I can make promises from a monetary standpoint of what that's going to look like. Ms. Kelly.
Sorry, if I could just add one more thing to that. Considering the drop in numbers of, of students who were identified, I'd argue if we wanted to talk about budget, you know, implications, we should be talking about how to address that rather than how to address these, the needs of, how are we going to fix a two-year Math Academy? So I'd rather see money spent there on, hey, how can we, how can we get back to where we were?
And agree, I agree with you. And I think that, you know, given the small number that we're looking at and if we end up needing to hire, impact staffing, I would hope that potentially I, math and science interventionists could provide supports for those, to catch those kids up and hopefully provide supports to move this very small number this year forward. And that's where I am on it right now. Any other feedback or comments, questions? So, um, the feeling, how do you feel about staff reaching out to these eight families? Really presenting the option of moving them forward for fifth grade with the understanding that we don't have a plan for what happens in fifth grade? Ms. Kelly?
I wholeheartedly do not support that at all.
I don't support it either.
Since, anyone else?
I support it. Everybody get ready to speak up, please. We've got some people sitting back. Come on.
Yeah, I support that. I think it's a good idea to, to at least let them know what's happening and give them the option and see what they think. I would be interested to hear what they think.
Ms. Guernsey.
I feel an obligation to reach out to the parents. I don't see that we have another choice. I can't really imagine what this phone conver, how it's going to go because if I was on the other end of it, I would be concerned about having a lot of questions with no answers, but I don't, I don't see how we have a choice to do anything but that.
Mrs. Gruber thoughts?
I mean, I, I agree with Mrs. Guernsey. I, I, obviously the, the parents need to know, but I, you know, it's, it's June 14th and, you know, we don't, we don't know what to tell these families and, I don't know, I, I just, it makes me very uncomfortable, but at the same time, I feel like if they did into it, that at the very least, we need to let them know, but be very upfront that, man, you know, that mean, there's no plan.
I tend to fall into the camp where Ms. Rotelli and Ms. Kelly are. The incompleteness of the plan does, does give me pause. I would also like to request the chair, if you could make a remonstrance to bring the tone of the discussion down to a more civilized level, that would be appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I know emotions are running high on this and we're all just coming from the place of wanting what's best for our students and appreciate there might be differing opinions on this. All right, so I, based on the sense of the body, I think that we have the majority of just Mr. Cummings to, for staff to reach out to these families. Just let them know that based on this, this one metric of testing, that if we had been still running the Math Academy and if there had been a number of students, that they would have been eligible and present this as an option to them. Do you have any questions for us or any, any other?
Nope, we know what your next step is.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward to grading regulations.
All right, the next item is the grading regulations. There's two pages in your packet around this. This process began in conversations, it goes back more than a year with the policy committee. Really, and I don't want to speak for members of the policy committee, but I'll try to summarize essentially issues around inconsistent communication, inconsistent grading practices, inconsistent opportunities for students in, in, in the number of assessments they might take in a course, especially when, when multiple sections of a course, right? So if you take any of our courses, English nine, English 10, US History, two different teachers are teaching it and students are getting different opportunities to be assessed. You wind up with a difference in the number of potential points earned. You also wind up perhaps with a number of assessments being spread out unevenly over the course of a year or over a course of a semester. A number of practices and issues around then communication back to parents when students' grades began to falter. So a number of these issues were raised through policy committee and with the support of the policy committee, our head principals began to meet with a group of teachers, they each identified a group of teachers from their schools, to begin to work on this process. We had FEA representation in that, in that group. I think the first meeting, they, this process, by the way, had begun prior to the pandemic and was interrupted by the pandemic. But we began to meet again in February. There was, I think, three meetings of the committee over the course of the spring to look at this. Essentially, if you look at the regulations page, the communications pieces, the timing for entry into infinite campus, the grading and assessment practices, those, those issues were identified pretty much early on by the committee and there was agreement around those, with a hold on the reassessment opportunities and the grading for late work. And the, the last burst of work around this was in, at the May 24th, 25th, 24th, after school meeting, the faculty meeting, and then on the, and on the May 31st, part of the early, of the May 31st Professional Development Day, both high school staffs worked on this on site. The committee then met again to re, to kind of put things together, or I should say, the administrators went together, put the feedback together from their respective staffs and then summarized that in the guidelines for reassessments and the guidelines for late work. I presented this to the policy committee last Monday for their feedback. There was, they, they provided some additional clarification or questions around that helped clarify some of the items that were in this. I will point out, if you look at it on the guidelines for reassessments, one of the things that the policy committee provided to this was the fifth bullet down, teachers will use their discretion to decide whether the whole assessment or a portion of the assessment is... whether the whole assessment or a portion of the assessment is necessary or allowed in this process. There may be some assessment experiences that are not able to be recreated, for example, and we gave some examples of debates, class discussions, things like that. So the process was put in place, and that's where we landed. We sent this out with final information to the principals after that Policy Committee meeting, and this is where we are tonight. So these would go into effect in September of, when the school year begins in, in August.
Mrs. Maxine Cannelly?
So just to give a little bit more background, norm, this is obviously a rather backwards way to come at the board. Normally, it's policy coming to you first and then the administrative regs. And so just to piggyback on Mr. Cummings' comment, we started the policy work on, well, Mr. Cummings and I had a policy discussion back when he was the Chief Academic Officer. So that was many years ago. So this has been in the pipeline for quite some time. We started to get up a pseudo-head of steam last spring, didn't, you know, again, this was a beast because we were trying to Frankenstein a policy from many surrounding districts. Summer came, we put the brakes on, we tried to tackle it again in the fall. And ultimately, one of the things making the Policy Committee hesitate is we wanted to see the regs before we really, or we wanted to see an outline or a sense of the shape of the regs before we committed definitively to final policy. And so it was this back and forth with staff, finally arriving at about the turn of the year, to R saying that, okay, we're going to put the focus on the regs, we can't get the policy done and have that done in time. And so we basically kind of asked for a one-pager of what we know to be an issue out there is an issue of consistency, which is bound to happen in a district of our size. And of all the things that teachers are doing, being spot-on consistent with each other is challenging. But that was the charge of the Policy Committee, is to address these in a good first effort, faith effort in that regard. And so we've been back and forth, having regularly communicated with Mike. We've had the head principals at our policy meetings. They have reported on what their staff has been saying to them. And so this was a very collaborative experience and which I enormously appreciated. The, the feedback of the Policy Committee was taken seriously. Most of it is in here. This is by no, I do want to assure our state to the board, this is by no means done. There were more issues that we essentially ran out of time to tackle because what was really important was that we have something, this, and also just your clear, these are administrative regs. This is not a voting item. This is something, however, that we wanted the full board to be aware of because we want it to be communicated to parents. We wanted this ready to roll for the start of the school year, and thus, this was as far as we got. But next year, we will be actually crafting the policy that needs to go with these regs. And these regs will certainly also be revisited as, you know, what seems great in theory, sometimes on rollout, things are going to need to be altered, and there'll need to be additions made to it. But again, I just appreciate all that work that we've had with staff putting this together.
Okay, one thing.
Yes, Mr. Cummings?
I want to thank Ms. Maxine Cannelly for filling out the details there. I, one thing that I failed to mention, this, this really is, in some ways, a reform document. There's, and I would say that reform, use that word reform on a couple of different levels. Part of it is the reform of the issues around consistency in communication. There were things that were not going well and, and that had to be fixed. So that's a reform. But there's also, if you look at some of the reassessment, the late work, we really took an approach, and Ms. Marte informed some of the work of the committee as well, that we were trying to think about ways that, when we think about all of our students, what some of our students have, that not all of our students necessarily have access or advocate for themselves. And so we began to, and this really shows up in some of the work that the Policy Committee added at the very last meeting, where, you know, trying to think, make things more explicit for students, take some of the burden off of students for them to be the ones in the know, that we would provide this information in front. You'll notice that there's several references in this document to, to essentially course syllabi and course grading practices that will be universal for all of those teachers teaching that same course, that will be handed out at the beginning of the year, provided to parents, with a lot of that information given to students and parents right up front. So to, in a sense, to level the playing field around access to information. And the reassessment piece is, many of our teachers, I think when we surveyed teachers at the, at the, back in, in May, when the teachers initially met, around 40% of our teachers were already offering reassessment opportunities. So this is again saying, if that's, it's a, I personally would endorse that practice. But if, if you've got a teacher who does it and a teacher who doesn't do it, that's an inequity issue. And so we wanted to make sure that that was level as well. So those are the types of things that, when I mentioned reform, that's the type of reform that's captured, tried to capture. And as Ms. Maxine Cannelly said, this will be a document that, because it's regulations, will be more easily able to be adjusted in response to needs over the course of time. But from this, the policy itself will emanate based on what we learn through the course of next year.
Any questions? Thank you to the Policy Committee for their work on this, and to the staff. All right. Moving on to 2022, 2023 K-5 enrollment update. Dr. Parrish? Can I have a motion to extend the meeting to 11:15? Ms. Jacobson, a second? Ms. Guernsey, all in favor? Ms. Vitale, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, Ms. Kelly? All opposed? Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Peterson? Pass this, I'm just like doing my, here. Motion carries. Okay, hopefully we'll try to do it before that, but I'd want to give a section 15 minutes. Dr. Parrish?
So the enrollment report is provided as of June 6th. You can see that there are two classes that were at the class size threshold, grade two class at Dwight, a grade one class at Jennings, one elementary school that was in need of fewer such sections than what was budgeted, and that was McKinley and kindergarten, one section, and one elementary school that needed more sections than what was budgeted, and that's Osborne Hill, one section in kindergarten. Right now, we're holding on hiring just to ensure that those schools that may have one above or one below the threshold have the opportunity over the summer to contact parents to ensure that those that are enrolled are actually coming so that we can avoid hiring unnecessarily.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Parrish, for the update. Oh, Ms. Maxine Cannelly?
It's one, at this point in time, do these numbers include the new open choice students?
No, because they, we submitted that information to them on May 23rd. So they have to go through their application process and everything else.
And I apologize that I forget this. When we do that, I know we offer a certain number of options per grade. Does it stipulate the school as well?
It stipulates the school and the grade. And so they only offer applications to those specific grades at those specific schools. So once they actually register, that's when they show up in this report.
Which I understand, but we have, having submitted the report, do any of those positions that we have put out there as we can fill these, do, does that impact any of our number of class sizes?
No.
Okay. And then last thing regarding kindergarten, how are we tracking compared to last year at this time? I understand we're below our projection, but I don't, I'm assuming that does not surprise us.
So last year, as of June 1st, we had 588. As in comparison to right now, we're 554, 544, excuse me.
But then in terms of percentage of where we ended up? Like 588 compared to where we ended up to start the school year?
I don't have that information here tonight.
Sorry. Thank you.
It's okay.
Thank you, Dr. Parrish. Okay, moving on to fundraising report.
Corinne Laborius, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services. So in your packet, you have a fundraising activity report. This is the Activity General Ledger as of June 9th. It's not our final, it's the unaudited. They're still closing out the fiscal year. This represents co-curricular and extracurricular activities contingent on fee or fundraising, and received and expended by school leaders on behalf of the schools. So the bookkeepers within the schools maintain the ledger, they maintain a bank account. This represents all of the activity that's happened year-to-date, including with the beginning balances. And it funds such activities as yearbook, field trips, band, Arabic club, geology club, for example, Odyssey of the Mind, National Honor Society. So all the extracurricular activities that our students get to do, administered by the school leader and managed fiscally by the book, bookkeeper in the school. We, if you look at the end page, the beginning balance is about one point. I apologize, it's page number 12 of 14. The beginning balance for all schools was about 1.1 million. The JV about also 1.1. The working balance is about 1.3 million after the distributions. And so we would expect some more activity throughout the rest of the year. We'd expect, looking at historically what the activity has been in the fundraising accounts, to be about 1.1, a little more starting next year's beginning balance as well. So if there are any questions, yes, yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Hi, thank you for this report. This is a bit of an eye-opener for me. I don't believe that we have ever seen these numbers before.
Yeah, it is in your policy. So I think it was raised at the finance, in the Policy Committee, because we're looking at the fundraising policies, and also in the Finance Committee to bring this to your attention.
No, no, and I, and I appreciate this. I, I did not expect to see quite so many lines and quite so much money to things that, look, you have, you know, the class of 1970, like apparently there's $12.31 from the, from the Fairfield High School class of 1988. I can find you the class of 88 class president here. You know, Ward has, you know, $234.55 in an account for the Jack Strauss Memorial. Great guy, I knew him well, but he died a bunch of years ago. Like, what happens to these things?
Yes, so it's a really good question. So I was glad also to be seeing it because I, I do sign off on the checks. So my, my oversight during my tenure here has been to, actually, I physically sign all the checks that go out. But I don't have oversight, it is a separate entity in, into the accounts. But I do have fiduciary responsibility to make sure that all of the rules are followed. And we do have audit responsibility. So the bookkeepers provide us their year-end. So we do watch over the bank recs as they happen monthly, but this was my first time looking at it in this way as well. And so we will drill down and find out for each of these accounts why they're still open. So for example, like a class of 2018 might have something still open because they had intended to do a multi-year project and were not allowed, if they had an intent for the fund, were not allowed to take down the funds unless we convey that, you know, appropriately.
Yeah, but the Andrew Ward class of 1980 has $4,125.63 in an account somewhere.
Yes.
Like, there's a lot of this stuff in here.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson, go ahead.
Are these, are these assets in interest-bearing accounts?
They are, yes.
At what point, I guess my fundamental question about a lot of these is at what point, and I guess for a lack of a better term, does this cheat to us?
Is this, I'm sorry.
When does this, when does it become our money?
Well, the-
Like, when does, when does the class of 1978 either get a refund or?
They do need to get a refund. We don't commingle because it is, it is a separate entity, and it is for the purpose of student-supported activities. I agree with you. 1972, 1982, all of the older classes, I have to find out why the money still exists in those accounts, and, and I will get, get you that information.
There's dozens and dozens of these lines. I mean, I think this is something that cries out for a lot of oversight.
Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, I, I'm trying to remember, Ms. Laborius, when, when I was a high school principal and we had, my high school was not as old as Andrew Ward or Friff Award at the time, but we had these accounts. Isn't there a way, a process by which a district can assume the, the funding in those accounts? Because essentially, they're dormant.
Yes. And so I suppose I should have started with that answer. There is a process that we have to go through first. And so part of our looking at this now is to say, yes, we should go through that process.
Okay, I'll just, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I just, the, the volume of these accounts and the amount of money that's just lying dormant, as Mr. Cummings says, is shocking.
Yes.
Could one of these classes come and say, we want this money, we're having a 50-year reunion?
That's why we have to go through a process. So, I mean, it's important that you see this first, you know, and I'm glad that the board's seeing it. I apologize that it's not cleaned up when you're seeing it. But there is a process we have to go through, and we will initiate that process now, and look forward to reporting back to you at the start of the fiscal year in September about the status of these accounts.
Thank you, Ms. Laborius. Ms. Kelly, um? Okay. Well, yeah, I'm thinking, you know, some of these, some of these reunions, I mean, yeah, absolutely. Um, where are we? Committee liaison reports? Ms. Vitale?
So SEPTA is having its end-of-year wrap-up meeting tomorrow night. It's Zoom at 7:30. So go to fairfieldsepta.org for that. And also this Thursday, we're having SEPTA Day at the Fairfield Public Library in the Rotary Room at the main library. So you can come down and learn about the inclusive services and adaptive materials available to families and children of all ages. And check out, you can get a tour. They're going to do a summer reading kickoff. You can visit their new multisensory de-escalation room. And there will be an ice cream bar to make your own sundaes.
Any other reports?
Just briefly for Finance Committee, we did get an update on the budget. We've also been dealing with Ms. Laborius about additional materials that we could have at our financial updates to give a little more color on various things. And there was, finally, we passed something on to the Policy Committee for the intention of possibly creating a goal specifically to business and non-instructional operations, a policy 3000 that we don't currently have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Open board comment? Ms. Vitale?
I just want to give a little shout-out and a very sincere thank you to Ms. Eileen Fagan, who will be retiring after 46 years, 22 here in Fairfield. She is one of the best special education preschool teachers at the Early Childhood Center. I had the pleasure of having both my children go through her class. I was a room mother for I don't know how many years. And she was the standard by which I have gone through the rest of Fairfield Public Schools, you know, seeing what a special education teacher can do and should do for their students. I am enormously grateful to her. She is amazing at what she does, and she has changed so many lives. So thank you, Ms. Eileen. We will miss you.
Mrs. Maxine Cannelly?
Just in case anybody was wondering, the Tomlinson Middle School Odyssey of the Mind team finished in 12th place out of 45 teams at Worlds. They had, as far as I could tell, a fabulous experience. And I am delighted and very hopeful that it will, Odyssey of the Mind will further expand in Fairfield next year.
Anybody else?
I had the privilege of attending a couple of recognition ceremonies at Fairfield Ward over the last two days. Today, the civics class was recognized as a red, white, and blue school by the State of Connecticut. The Secretary of State recognized the civics class for their, their civic engagement. And I thank those board members and community leaders who engaged with that, that class to help move that initiative forward. Also, was at Ward, they were recognized by the ADLs, a No Place for Hate school, along with Ludlow. So congratulate both those schools on the work that they did this year to be, to receive- So congratulate both those schools on the work that they did this year to be, to receive that recognition. And lastly, as we wind up this last week of school, I, I hope everybody has a ton of fun for students, teachers. And not our last meeting of the year, but for those, those teachers that are listening, thank you for, for all you've done this year. And one more week and then you get a break. And I hope that, I hope the week is filled with joy for everybody. And with that, we will go to public comment. Any public comment? Seeing none, motion to adjourn. Mr. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Jacobson, all in favor. Motion carries, 8-0. Thank you.